Okay, this Board of Trustees recombines to the regular board meeting of the Paris Union High School District at 5:46 PM. The next item, well actually part of this 5.1 item is our Pledge of Allegiance, so if you could please... I'm sorry, we have a moment of silence in place of the invocation, if you could please stand. Thank you, please be seated. The next item is action item 7.1, Revision and Adoption of the Agenda for Today, Monday, June 4th, 2018. So do I have a motion? Trustee Nelson and trustee Garcia.
Dr. Arouz, we'd like to suggest adding a second closed session in at the end of the meeting, as part of the revision of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Are there any questions? If no questions, we are going to move forward to vote, taking in consideration the regular agenda plus the revision that Mr. Bennett has mentioned of adding an additional closed session at the end of the agenda. Let's vote. Action item 7.5 has been approved by zero and the agenda for today's meeting has been approved. Next item is an information item, 8.1 Nutrition Services Report.
Okay, well, good evening, good evening Board and Cabinet. This is Audrey Mitchell, our Director of Nutrition Services, and you all know me. So, but we wanted to give a brief report tonight on nutrition services. And so, we're going to tag team a little bit here, but I'll begin with the history of nutrition services. So, the Paris Union High School District took over operations of its food service program from the Paris Elementary School District at the beginning of the 2010-11 school year. After operating for five years and with an ending balance of almost $3 million, the California Department of Education then placed PUHSD on a spending plan or a budget agreement. We needed to spend a total of $1.9 million within six years, or funding would be reduced in the future years. As a result of that, a plan was developed to rebrand the department to the Terabytes Cafe, using those excess funds to provide higher quality food and really a better school cafeteria experience, also hoping to increase participation within our lunch lines. So just an example, in 2014-15, this is what our breakfast menu looked like. You can see it's not real extensive. It's basically the same every day with the exception of the rotation of the coffee cake and the bagel and the benefit bar there on that last line. And so, you know, not providing a lot of variety to the students, of course, impacted participation in terms of the number of students that came through, in this case, the breakfast lines. But also, the cost of producing items like this, you know, they weren't fresh items, they were prepackaged, frozen, that sort of thing. The cost isn't great, all of which contributed to that excess ending balance and thus the spending plan that we were put on by CDE. Just another example of our lunch menu in 2014-15. Most of the items here, again, are prepackaged, ready to eat. One thing you may think that there was a mistake, a copy and paste mistake, copying Monday to Tuesday to Tuesday to Wednesday, but that's not a mistake. We serve the very same things every single day. And again, no variety to students, and again, mostly frozen, ready to eat, prepackaged items. And so, again, those menus that we had contributed to not only our participation rates, but also the excess ending fund balance. And so, with that, Terabytes was born. We came up with a plan to, how are we going to, A, most importantly, serve our students quality meals, quality breakfast, quality lunch. Our students in this district deserve that, students in every district deserve that. But, you know, we live and work here and we're passionate about our students here. And so, especially with the high number of students who come from families that are in poverty, it was very, very important to us to serve quality meals to our students, both at breakfast and at lunch, particularly when we know that oftentimes those are the best meals, or in some cases, the only meals that our students receive. And so, Terabytes Cafe was born, and I'm going to turn it over to Audrey to talk about what some of the components of that were.
Good evening. So, as you guys know, we switched over to Terabytes in the beginning of 1617. During that time, we purchased uniforms and aprons to display our Terabytes logo, kind of showcase what we've become within that transformation. The uniforms were a one-time expenditure, and it brought us together as a uniformed group. Along with the uniforms, another purchase that was made was the digital menu boards. The digital menu boards were also a one-time expenditure. These digital menu boards displayed our menus, and they did a slideshow of different menus that we were displaying for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Along with the different menus, we also kind of showed fun little clips of nutrition information, nutrition history, items like that. And on top of the digital menu boards, we also purchased banners. The banners were able to kind of showcase a colorful, you know, idea of choosing different menu options, choosing different components that made the complete meal for breakfast and lunch. As you can see, the banner down at the bottom said the freshly prepared salad, so it also kind of showcased the different freshly made items that we would serve to our students. Another one was our environmental graphics. So, if you guys have gone around to the different sites, you guys have probably seen our banners. We have different banners on different areas of the cafeterias, in the front of the schools, on the outside of the schools. We did the taste tests, you know, to see what kind of items the students would like to see. You know, those were all one-time expenditures that we placed out into the cafeterias to kind of get the students to come in, increase participation, see a different, a different style than nutrition services. They wanted to see something different than nutrition services, it brought color. As you can see, this was the menu that we post up, we posted this menu. We did it in a banner style, we did it in a poster style. We were able to post them through the different areas of the cafeteria, along with the digital menu boards as well. Same with our prepared fresh items, like Candace just mentioned. A lot of our items on our original menu in 1415, I would say, one out of the seven or eight items, or maybe two, were freshly made. So, going into our Terabytes transition, we added items to the menu that were prepared every single day, whether it be yogurt parfaits, sandwiches, salads, burritos, things like that, so that the students knew that we were making them there on-site. Along with the different specials, we did different packaging. We didn't move forward with some of the packaging, but we did do different packaging to kind of get the students to see what kind of options they were taking, kind of, you know, showed them what we were serving. A lot of the items, you can't really tell what it is unless you kind of plaster it all over the window. So, we wanted to make sure that they were able to see what they were choosing. So, the packaging was also something that we, you know, worked on as a one-time expenditure, some of it was ongoing. And we carried it on through the rest of the 1617 year, especially with our specials that we were serving, which did become costly items, but it were items that the students really enjoyed.
So, you know, those strategies proved successful, and as Audrey mentioned, you know, a lot of what we did in terms of some of the food costs, some of the packaging were one-time in nature, kind of the hook to get the students, you know, coming back into the school cafeterias. And some were ongoing, because we needed to make sure we were spending that amount of money that was accumulating to that ending balance now on an ongoing basis. And so, you can see that our meal participation increased by almost 115,000 meals between 2014-15 and 1516. And while it has decreased slightly in 1617 and 1718, it is still higher than 1415. There's another factor, we'll talk about food costs in a little bit, that's contributing somewhat to that decline in 1617 and 1718. But, we're proud to serve that many meals, you know, to our students and of the quality as well. And so, there's really two major components to expenditures within food services, and it's labor hours, which I'm going to speak about, and then food costs, which Audrey will speak about in a minute. So, as a result of that increased student participation in 1516, 47 labor hours or 2.32 meals per labor hour were added to the nutrition services budget for 1617. That equated to an additional ongoing expenditure of $341,000 to the budget. But it is important to note that that alone was not a new expenditure, because in that prior year, our overtime and our sub-costs to keep up with the production for that increased participation had risen to 192,000 before adding those increased hours, which was an increase over the prior year of 71.6%. So, that had to be taken into consideration as well. You can't run an operation solely, well, with an additional overtime or sub-costs. At some point, you need to turn that into regular, you know, hours, so long as that can be sustained. And of course, we thought that these added hours could be sustained because of the revenues that we were receiving, which I'm going to show you in just a second. So, when I look at our per-meal revenue increases, and I've shown it here, broken down by free, reduced, and paid, both for breakfast and for lunch, we get a different reimbursement rate for each of those meals that we serve. But because a majority of our students fall under that free eligibility category, what I've done is shown the dollar amount on a per-meal if a student were to eat breakfast and lunch, and what that increase is. And so, you can see on a year-to-year basis, that increase in revenue on a per-meal basis was between 2% and 3%. And then, when we similarly look at our labor cost increase on a per-employee basis, and there's a little bit of an anomaly here. In 2015-16 and 1617, there were, we'll start with 2015-16, there was a 6.5% raise given to all employees in the district, but we're going to talk about the classified bargaining unit here for a minute. Because our nutrition services employees belong to CSCA, the raises that are negotiated and given to their unit as a whole also go to nutrition services. And so, that's not a one-time raise, it wasn't like an off-schedule bonus, but it would never have been intended that we give 6.5, and then another 6.5, and then another 6.5, because then we wouldn't be keeping up with our revenue increases of between 2% and 3%. Somewhat similarly, in 2016-17, as part of a negotiated compensation study with CSCA, the row at which, or the rate of pay at which the nutrition services assistants were paid, moved up from a row nine to a row 10, which is equivalent to about another 2.5%. And so, if you were to remove those two factors, you can see that our labor costs on a per-employee basis really keep pace with the revenue as well, on a per-meal basis. You know, of course, outside of those two anomalies, I talked about that variance, is pretty similar. Sustainable on a year-to-year basis, particularly with the participation increases. So, I know it was said at the last board meeting that, you know, we shouldn't have added these, you know, hours in the first place if it wasn't sustainable. And so, you know, I want to make sure that everyone is aware that the hours should have been sustainable, you know, based on the data that we were looking at, based on the meals per labor hour formula and so forth. But, you know, well after Terabytes, you know, became a thing, and we added the hours and that sort of thing, we began experiencing astronomical food cost increases, which actually Audrey's going to talk about now.
So, with the new menu that we implemented with Terabytes, it also brought on new food costs. So, during that time, we were offering different specials, different menu items that weren't available before we had, when the old menu was around. And so, during that time, we brought food in that wasn't wasn't the same price as the other options that we were offering, which were the frozen, ready-to-eat, prepackaged items. These were fresh, so of course, fresh items cost more. Along with that was the packaging and everything else that we spent with the specials, that did increase our food costs as well. But we wanted to make sure that as we were providing the specials to the students, we were also increasing in our participation, which in 1516, you were able to see that we were serving over 114,000 meals, more than what we did in the previous year. So, the one-time expenditures obviously were our more costly specials, which came to be, you know, teriyaki chicken, our fresh-made burritos. A lot of that also was some overproduction, so the overproduction was so that we wouldn't run out of new items. We wanted to make sure that all of our students saw the specials, saw the items, and so at times, we did overproduce. So, those were one-time expenditures that we did spend money on. Bottled water was another one-time expenditure. We brought in the bottled water for the students that came through the line. Every student that got a meal also received a bottled water, and in the hopes to increase participation, to get students to come in and see Terabytes, and increase participation overall. Ongoing expenditures are equivalent to our annual excess ending fund balance, and equivalent in proportion to participation increase. All of our one-time expenditures ongoing, obviously, was a marketing strategy to increase our participation and to promote the new cafeteria and promote Terabytes Cafe. Changing that perception from nutrition services for our high school district and bringing on Terabytes was one thing that we wanted to do to get more students to come in. Like Candace mentioned earlier, it's sometimes their only meal, if not the one meal they get per week, so we wanted to make sure that they had that opportunity come into our cafeteria. A lot of the times, we increased the food quality and the quantity. Food quality and quantity, obviously, you know, the quality is going to change the cost of our food costs. So, like I mentioned earlier, the fresh items, the less processed items obviously are going to cost us more. Also in 1617, so in the beginning of 1617, I shouldn't say beginning, but around there, we saw obviously dramatic food increase costs. And that was related, like I said, to our specials and other items that we were adding to the menu. In February of 2017, we had a food distributor that was named Lebo. In February, they notified us that they were going to be shutting down their operations, and then we had no other vendor to go to but Gold Star Foods. Gold Star Foods was the only child nutrition vendor to provide us items for breakfast and lunch. So, during that time of switching from Lebo to Gold Star, we also saw a 1% to 3% increase in food costs. And whether it's, you know, 1% to 3%, in one case of spicy chicken patties or hamburger patties in mass quantities, that obviously raises our food costs quite high. So, that's where we also saw a drastic increase in food costs. Not only that, at the time, Lebo was shutting down, they were shorting us over 300 cases of food a week. So, by the time Gold Star came in, we started increasing our orders to make sure that we weren't running out of any food. Another item was our commodity chicken. So, we're part of a purchasing cooperative for Southern California, and in this cooperative, we have so much chicken that's allotted to different districts. During that time, the commodity chicken, which was about $73 a case, ran out, and so all districts were paying commercial pricing if you were getting certain chicken products. So, $73 per case went up to $177 per case. So, that was a drastic increase in our, in our food costs, and a lot of our items obviously include chicken. So, in 2016-17 Nutrition Services, we spent $259,000 more than originally budgeted, which was an overall increase of 10.85%, which was attributed to the increase for only one-half of the year. So, when we look at one-half of the year, we look at our, you know, food distributor Lebo switching over and going over to Gold Star, and that 1% to 3% increase in food costs. That's, you know, what's attributed to that 10.85%. Food increase, so this is also the same story for 1718. We had a rise in food costs between our produce, our, uh, Halandia's, whatever distributors, our dairy and our paper good products. You know, a lot of the rises that we've been seeing, obviously, have been related to the rise in gas prices, wage inflation, freight charges, suppliers. A lot of the distributors that we're also using, like Gold Star, for example, they're cutting them off right at eight hours. They're not letting them work any overtime, so it's obviously increasing their costs, which is ultimately increasing our costs as well. The costs are far exceeding our CPR, Consumer Price Index. We've also utilized many different purchasing strategies, being part of a cooperative, you know, helping us. We were able to jump on the purchasing bid for frozen refrigerated goods with the Marietta School District. And even though we have seven other districts on that purchasing bid, we still saw 15% to 20% increase in majority of our food items. Some of those items are going from $50 a case to $70 a case. So, they're pretty drastic, which, you know, has our eyes watching for 1819 and planning out our menu to make sure that we stay within our food costs and within our budget. Moving into the 1819 school year, like I said, 15-20%, that was on almost 70% of our items that are currently on our menu now. So, like I said, when you see it, you know, in small quantities, it doesn't seem like it makes a big difference, but when you're over, when you're ordering over 600 cases, it makes a pretty big difference. So, and that's for pretty much all of our vendors. So, our food waste, like we mentioned earlier, during the time of Terabytes and transitioning, we provided a lot of specials. During that time, we wanted to make sure we weren't running out of any items, we didn't want to have to turn away any students. But the food waste accounts for approximately about 5% of the total items prepared each day. So, if you look at how many items we're preparing each day, and the amount of waste, one day can fluctuate from 70 items to 100 items. It's all going to depend on, you know, how the students are feeling that day. Are they going to be, you know, going for this item and not that item? So, every day, it changes, you know, weather can play an effect, and on sporting events, field trips, I mean, there's so many different things that could play an effect on what your participation's going to look like. And I can tell you, it's difficult, if not impossible, to have zero food waste. No matter what, one day you'll have 10 spicy chicken sandwiches left, and the next day, you can have, you know, 30 left over. It changes every single day, so it's hard to predict that. But, you know, Nutrition Services, we do our best to monitor that and double-check to make sure that we're trying to have as little as possible. We also want to make sure that they're offered a selection of hot and cold meal items. We want to make sure that, you know, if it's hot outside, they still have that cold meal to choose from. If it's cold outside, they still have that hot meal to choose from. So, that's obviously during our first and second lunch periods. Having that careful balance and determining the meals to prepare each day, that's also could be, you know, sometimes a guessing game. The staff's really good at knowing, hey, we're going to prepare 1,500 today, we only serve 1,200, 1,300, 1,400, what are we going to look like for tomorrow? So, that's, you know, that forecasting measure that we always have to look at. If you can see, 2016-17, the food waste amounted for $42,748, or less than 1%, 0.7% of total expenditures for Nutrition Services.
So, in the, you know, before I get to our recommendation that was before the Board at the last meeting, I just want to reiterate that Nutrition Services, all the way through Nutrition Services, has done their very best to deal with the circumstances, you know, put before them, which were outside of their control, the food costs, and they've done a number of strategies to try to live within the budgetary constraints of the Nutrition Services Fund. I believe it was 10 lunch items, you've decreased down to seven. So, but again, finding that careful balance of, you know, having, you know, you don't, you don't want to lose participation, but we also want to try to cut food costs as much as we possibly can on our end to counterbalance the food cost increases. And so, our recommendation to the Board was to lay off 39 labor hours. Important to note that 13 of those hours were from, you know, then, current vacancies to meet those budgetary strains with the food costs. Nutrition Services Funds are accounted for separately from other district operations, since the operation of a cafeteria program is similar to that of a business that's intended to be self-sustaining. And so, while a layoff is never an easy recommendation, and all other cost-cutting strategies were already implemented or had been planned to be implemented for 2018-19, the purchasing with seven other districts, you know, to make sure that we're getting, you know, the best possible prices, you know, going forward, that sort of thing. And so, getting back to that careful balance that we keep talking about, it's always needed, is that ability to continue to provide meal services for our students without experiencing, experiencing a reduction in participation, because that's our, that's our revenue. So, that's just a short, a short Nutrition Services story from 2010 to 2018. Thank you. Grant wants me to remember my manners, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Raines. Our next item is an information item, 9.1 Invitation to Address the Board of Trustees on Agendized and Non-Agendized Items. We have one speaker. We have several speakers. Individual speakers shall be allowed three minutes to address the Board on each agenda or non-agenda item. The Board shall limit the total number for public input on each item to 20 minutes. With Board consent, the President may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation, depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The President may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue, and may ask that the additional persons speak only if they have something new to add. Our first speaker for this meeting, Ms. Helen Steymac.
Good evening, President Dr. Arouz, members of the Board, Superintendent Mr. Bennett, and Cabinet. My name's Helen Steymac, I'm the CSCA Chapter 469 President. I stand before you this evening, not sure what action the Board will take in regards to the layoff of our Nutrition Service workers. So, all I can do is remind you that these members constitute such a low amount of money that their positions could be saved by thoughtful and responsible fiscal planning, and maybe a little help from the LCAP Funds. One of the issues that needs to be studied is why our sales are so low. I believe part of that answer may be found in the rampant competing sales on our campuses. Did you know that teachers who have microwaves in their classrooms sell cup of soups and waters to students? Did you know that our ASPs have lunch items for sale, and at some sites, you can even preorder? Did you know that our students consistently bring items to sell, and it's so rampant on our campuses that administration has yet to take a hard line? This is not something that just happened this year. These practices have been occurring for years, but it now has taken the toll on our Nutrition Department. Please, use the resources you have to address this and other problems that keep these workers on staff for another year, while administration irons out the issues in their department and with administration at the school sites. We don't need to start the next school year being behind the eight ball with increased enrollments and then not having enough staff with no one wanting to accept subassignments. Let's do this right. Save our lowest-paid employees' jobs now, they have families too, and need our support more than ever. I thank you. They have families too and need our support more than ever. I thank you.
Our next speaker, Ms. Vicky Mueller.
Good evening, Dr. Aral, board, Mr. Bennett, Cabinet. I want to add something to, that Helen just said there too. It's not just other people selling, it's also students. And when you report students selling things on campus, it does not get shut down. In fact, one person said to me, you need to pat them on the back for being entrepreneurial. So, so that is a problem. But I'm here because, as you know or aware, we're ending the school year without coming to a tentative agreement on our eighteen, nineteen contract. And it's become apparent that the district doesn't want to make teachers a priority. With the guaranteed COLA and increase in ADA, special one-time monies the district can use for their special pet projects, we believe that we at least deserve COLA. We're not asking for the moon. I want you to also think about this. We've gone from forty-two percent of the budget to thirty-seven point nine percent of the budget in salaries. So us taking on additional seventh period has resulted in, we think we calculated it out to, a little bit more than forty teachers not being hired. So where's that savings gone? It's not come to us. Where is it? So what we're asking you to do is to take the reins and grant us COLA. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Dr. Joanna Dorado.
Good evening, Dr. Aral, Mr. Bennett, the Cabinet, and the rest of the board members. I'm here as a, as a high school counselor, representing Paris High School. I have some data that I wanted to share with you, if we can maybe pass it down. Because I'll be referencing that data. So the reason I'm here this evening is to pay attention a little bit to numbers. I know we do a big focus on numbers, and I, I know my, we'll get into it a little bit. But our school currently has a, current enrollment of two thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine students. Paris High School social economic status is at ninety-three percent. Paris Heritage High School, it represents seventy-three percent of low SES. Paloma Valley is fifty-five percent of low SES. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because as a department at Paris High School, we are not rehiring one of our positions that is retiring. Dr. Johnson's gonna be retiring. She's one of our counselors at Paris High School. And I wanted to bring your attention to the graduation rates we've had at Paris High School. Back in two thousand and fourteen, we had seventy-nine percent of graduating seniors at, five counselors at the site. The class of twenty sixteen increased to eighty-four percent, and that was at six counselors at the site. In class of twenty seventeen, we saw a ninety percent graduation rate with six counselors on site. The reason we are bringing this data forward is because we're comparing our sites to two other sites or three other sites in our district that maybe have a higher number of students, but we're not paying attention to our high-need population. If you take a look at our EL learner population, we currently have double EL learners compared to Heritage High School. So our, our Paris High School students have thirty-two percent of EL learners. That's six hundred and ninety-eight students. While the other sites are, are keeping their sixth counselor, we are not replacing our sixth counselor that would be managing these caseloads. And that is why we're here this evening, and I hope you take the time to listen to the other members that are here at our, our site too, representing a similar concern. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Ms. Julia Peacock.
Thank you very much for having, giving me this opportunity tonight, everyone. My name is Julia Peacock, and I'm a teacher at Paris High School. I also am the mentor for the Plus Leadership Program. I'm here on behalf of our counselors and our teachers and our students. One of the issues that Ms. Dorado brought up is the fact that Dr. Johnson is retiring this year, and the board has rescinded the job opening. What I noticed about the job opening is that it was a lot of academic requirements. Make sure you understand A through G and FAFSA. But one of the things that is being missed desperately at Paris High School is our social-emotional needs. If you'll see, there's a two-sided, no-highlighted paper. Back in November of this year, we gave a survey to almost seven, nine hundred students. That's just over two hundred students per grade level. And we received from very, some very shocking results. For example, if I direct you to number six on that first sheet, I have thought about suicide in the last thirty days because of bullying on my campus. Six percent of our students responded in the affirmative. If you take a look at the next survey that you have, it's exactly the same questions, except this survey was given today. We have a sampling of approximately two hundred students per grade level, considering our seniors have already withdrawn for the year. If we go back to numbers, and I'll give you the highlights. Green means that our numbers have improved. The red means the numbers have gotten worse, and yellow means nothing has changed. And I made black asterisks next to the numbers that involved mental health specifically. And if we look at number six again, we still have six percent of our students in the last thirty days now who have thought of killing themselves. I just took one to counseling today. The idea that we are supporting academic achievement without addressing the social and emotional needs of our very high-need, low-income population at Paris High School is a shame. As a matter of fact, this board was supposed to implement a suicide prevention and awareness program at the beginning of this school year, by law. And it took a phone call to your assembly member, from me, to get the board to focus on that suicide prevention and awareness program. The green numbers on this document have nothing to do with your support. It has everything to do with twenty students, one teacher, and one principal, who brought mental health awareness to our campus by calling tens, dozens of support providers across our campus. If we lose this counselor, the next student that goes through with their suicide is on your hands.
Our next speaker, Mr. Javier Padilla.
So they, they know me as a talker, so. Hello, everyone. Hey, you know, one of, one of the things that I wanted to go ahead and discuss to, to the board, the president, the cabinet, the superintendent, is, you know, I don't know how this decision was made. I don't know how it was done. But if it was done on numbers, I think we've already kind of heard that it's not a numbers game, because kids aren't numbers. And I think everybody in here, yourselves, the people behind me, we all know that kids aren't numbers. And when we start looking at numbers, then that becomes a problem. Because, yeah, our, our numbers might drop a little bit next year. And if that's the reason why our counselor was not renewed, or why we didn't get that particular person, you're not looking at the needs. Dr. Johnson has, has already been mentioned. Here are some of the things that she has dealt with throughout this year. These involve students. Depression, anxiety, self-harm, family issues, grief, bullying, suicide prevention, substance abuse, pregnancy, and loss of life. If you look at my caseload, here's what I've had to deal with this year, this year alone. This doesn't include everything, but here's some examples. Anxiety, self-harm, family issues, depression, you'll notice a correlation. Grief, conflict mediation, bullying, relationship issues, depression, homelessness, suicide prevention, fifty-one fifties, cancer, substance abuse, loss of life, molestation, pregnancies. Those are just some examples of what I had to go through. Now, I could include the other counselors, but it would be just repetitive. So when we think about numbers, it's about need. That's what we need, okay? So I hope you would reconsider and bring back another counselor. My caseload right now approximately is about three hundred and sixty-six students. Some people, I've even heard, say, you know, that's a good number. The national average is about two fifty. And you know what, in an utopian society, where the kids are four-point-oh, they have a perfect home, and things are great, maybe that is a good number. But when I have a kid crying in front of me, because they just found out they have cancer, and they don't know if they're gonna graduate tomorrow, I think that's a different story. So it's not just three sixty-six kids. And if Johnson, as she is retiring, bless you, my lady, if we don't get someone, I get another hundred kids or more. So I'll be near five hundred. And when we talk about, hey, Padilla, continue your success, continue the great work that you guys are doing at Paris High School, you've now added another one hundred to one hundred and fifty kids on my caseload. And I'm not even talking academics. I haven't even mentioned A through G. I haven't mentioned college and career. I haven't mentioned, I'm sorry. Oh, FAFSA, I mean, there's quite a bit. I'm just talking social-emotional. Plus all the assignments that I have under my plate. So please, when you're thinking numbers, and again, I don't know the reasoning behind this, but if it was a numbers game, it's a needs game. Our kids need us in the classroom and in counseling. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Our next speaker, Ms. Armenia Gajola.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, from the board and the cabinet. I am here like my colleagues, asking you to please reconsider your decision not to fill in the vacancy that's gonna be created by Dr. Johnson's retirement this year. I understand that you have your reasons, and while they might be justifiable, the overall impact of your decision will not be felt directly by you. It's gonna be felt directly by our students at Paris High. Several students came to mind last week when I heard about your decision. First, I thought about Luis, my senior in Algebra I from seventh period, who fell through the cracks of a broken educational system and accumulated a zero point three one overall GPA by the end of last semester. Regardless of his work ethic, it is clear to me that we, as an institution, did not have enough resources to help him be successful. And I feel guilty because I couldn't reach him during the few days that he did come to my seventh-period math class. I thought about Leslie, my freshman from sixth period, who asked to go to the restroom two weeks ago so she could actually call her sister using her own cellphone as she felt her whole world was crumbling down, and she did not know how to deal with it. She was obviously in need of a counselor who could assist her while carrying on with the other thirty-five students in her class. I thought about Kimberly, my freshman who lost her father during last Christmas break, who took two weeks off to deal with the grief. As well as Clayton, who lost his sixteen-year-old brother three weeks ago, and who came to school pretending all was well, when he was really not. I wonder how long they will have to wait to see someone in counseling if they had a breakdown in my class. I thought about Randy, who was in tears at our recent mental health awareness workshop because he was tired of going home to an alcoholic parent. He was tired of pretending everything was well. And a forty-minute parent conference we had last year to discuss his progress at school was definitely not enough. Nobody at that meeting knew or had an idea what was really going on. All I did when I ran into him the following day after that workshop was give him a hug and tell him, Randy, you know where my classroom is at. Finally, I thought about my freshman who wrote on her R E M. The reason I was absent from your class is because I was practically raped by a junior that comes to this school. Administrators and I knew already about the reported incident, yet I didn't know how to act. And I wish we had a counselor right away to assist her. I let her go home, but then following day I follow up, she agreed to take counseling treatment. Yet she had no idea where to get the services at. Ladies and gentlemen, it is obvious that our students at Paris High School are hurting. Will you please spend a little bit more resources on them and hire another counsel? Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker, Mr. Gabriel Lopez. Gabriela, Mrs. Gabriela Lopez.
Good evening, Dr. Ross, board members, and Cabinet, and everybody else in attendance. Paris High School counselors are here, and I'm gonna say their names quickly so they can stand up, they can see who we are, and then they can take a quick seat. Dr. Johnson, Ms. Tran, Mrs. Salvador, Mrs. Ramirez, Mr. Padilla, Dr. Dorado, and myself, Gabriela Lopez. We're the group who have the pleasure of working with our students at, our student panthers at Paris High. We work in conjunction with PHS instructors, classified and admin, to enrich our students' minds through academics, career technical education and guidance, assisting our students through the A through G four-year college prep options, teaching and connecting our kids with the tools and resources and networking skills necessary to help them transition to post-secondary options. And we also provide crisis intervention services, as we mentioned before. Unfortunately, our school district has decided to eliminate our counseling position being vacated by Dr. Shirley Johnson. The district office has stated Paris High School's enrollment will have a slight decrease. Our projected numbers to start next academic year is two thousand, two hundred and fifty-three. That is what we are hearing as counselors. Our current number right now is two thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine at Paris High. That is a difference of only eighty-four students. Keep in mind that aside from our regular returning students, we always have a significant number of new students enrolling at the beginning of each academic year. Are we prepared for that? We need to take that into account and not be scrambling later when it's too late. It won't be a surprise if we go back to our regular enrollment number or higher. But please, also keep in mind how having one less counselor at our site will affect the ability to continue to provide appropriate and efficient counseling services, which our students deserve at Paris High School. With tremendous respect to all of you here at the district office, we must emphasize Paris High School students are not just numbers or figures. They're our kids. Those are the kids that we see and work with every day as counselors at Paris High School. Please look beyond numbers and dollar signs, and let's focus on our responsibility together as a group here at Paris Union High School District to continue to work together to serve our students. So again, please reconsider eliminating this position. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Lillian Coffey.
Hello, all. I'm not an educator. I'm just a grandmother that's raising two Gate students. And I just want to go, my name is Lillian Coffey, for those that you don't know me. And I think that you need to replace Mrs. Johnson with a new counselor. And the reason I think this is because, as educators, you want the best for all of our children. And if you don't, the students are going to suffer in so many ways, and you're going to end up with more complaints. I think that's needed, and I think that's one thing that should be done, because these counselors do more. I've been under a rock, because my, my kids are all four-point-os, my two students are two Gate students. And you do, I, I never even realized the extent of the job of a counselor. But from what I can see, you do need to think very seriously about replacing Mrs. Johnson. She's very, she's needed, and if, I think if you don't, what's going to happen is you're going to be hearing the complaints. And I talk to Mr. Bennett once in a while, and I tell him, you know, all I want to do is thank you for everything that you've done for my kids and the staff at Paris High. But I've been fortunate to have two Gate students, and I'm the grandmother, for heaven's sakes. But I'm always there for them, but you should reconsider. But you should reconsider about replacing Mrs. Johnson because she's very, very needed there, her position. And that's all I can say. And again, I'm sorry, I'm not an educator. I don't know a lot of these facts, and I've been under a rock around another planet. But I just want you to really think the consequences of not replacing Mrs. Johnson.
Thank you, Ms. Coffey. Our next item is an action item, ten-point-one, curriculum, public hearing for local control accountability plan, and annual update for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen It is an action item, so before we listen to the presentation, do I have a motion? Trystine Ellison, Trystie Garcia? Yes, and this is a public hearing. After the presentation, we are going to receive comments and recommendations from that community regarding the Local Control Accountability Plan, LCAP, and the annual update for the eighteen-nineteen school year.
Good evening, Dr. Ross, members of the board, Mr. Bennett and cabinet, and also our guests. Tonight, it's my pleasure to, along with members of our ed services, to give you a presentation on the two thousand eighteen LCAP annual update. Just a little bit as a background, just want to remind you that up until about two thousand thirteen, funding for schools and local educational agencies were really based on revenue limits. In other words, you counted up the number of students you had, and there was a certain dollar amount that you received, and that was every district, regardless of what the demographics were in that particular local educational agency. In two thousand thirteen, the governor decided that he would sign the Local Control Funding Formula into law, and what it basically did was try to remove some of the bureaucracy. It allowed the districts to be more flexible in actually meeting the needs of students. With that came an accountability piece, and we'll talk about that as well. We want to make sure that student needs were met. We changed just from one-dollar amount to actually three. There was the base, which was a base amount, and then depending on your demographics, you had both a supplemental and concentration funding. And along with the elimination of the revenue limits, a lot of the state categorical funding also went by the wayside and was rolled into the, what would be the Local Control Funding Formula, the LCFF. And one of the things we wanted to make sure was that this new funding formula allowed districts to actually meet needs of students and took a look at their achievement gaps and that we would be able to close achievement gaps by making sure that we were putting the money where it needed to be, in particular pupils of poverty, English learners, and foster youth. With this extra funding formula, though, was an accountability system that was put into place. And so what each district needed to do was decide where their priorities were in two particular areas, not only programmatically, but based on what your programs were and where your priorities were. What does that do to your budget? In order to make sure that all the districts were looking at the same priorities, the state did identify eight particular priorities that I'll show you in just a second. And the other piece was to ensure that all the stakeholders within that community and that district, that local educational agency, would be able to provide feedback as to what the needs were of their particular community. I'm not going to read these to you. These are the eight state priorities, as you can see. And the implication was that all the districts needed to actually address those state priorities. What we did was we met with a variety of stakeholders, and see if I can show you here. Here's some particular examples. Not only our school-side councils, any of our parent committees. It included our parish relationship committees, both at the district and the site, leadership teams, ELAC, DLEC, and we also provided annual stakeholder meetings where the community was invited ahead of time. They would come, they would get the presentation on where we were and what we said our priorities were based on our understood needs. And then they offered some feedback. Just so that you're aware, these were the four goals that were identified. These, I will read to you. The first one was that all students would attain proficiency in English, Language Arts, and Math. The second was that all students would graduate from high school prepared for post-secondary and career options, that all departments and sites would provide a safe, positive learning environment for all students and staff, and lastly, secure and strengthen the home-school community connections and communications. It's really important that you understand that this is in draft form right now. We are working with the county office, who provides another set of eyes to us to look at what we're saying, where we're saying we're putting our priorities, not just programmatically, but budgetary. They will give us feedback, then we go in and make whatever adjustments to make sure that everything is aligned. Very much like many of the documents you see, that there's a lot that we try to address. Sometimes we may miss something, and so they provide feedback, and we're in the process of that now. And I may have missed a piece, and Diane, you'll have to fill in any place that I may have missed. So what I'm going to ask right now, well, let me go back a minute. All of our priorities and the focus that we have is based on the vision and mission that we updated last year. These are on all of the trainings we have, anytime we have any kind of conversation about what we say we need and where we say our priorities are. In addition to that, we created, with all of our stakeholder groups, that included parents, students, PSCA, CSEA, and admin. These were the, I'm going to say, the characteristics of the graduate profile that we expect of all of our graduates to have, if in fact, our vision is what we say it is and our mission is what we say it is. Whoop, what did I hit? So what we're going to do right now is we're going to go through each of the LCAP goals, and I'm going to ask Charles Tippi to come up, and he will talk a little bit about goal one.
Good evening. So my job is to talk about goal number one and our progress over the last school year. We had a series of different metrics that we were looking at. The first one was to increase the percentage of students performing at the standards met and exceeded levels on the Smarter Balance assessments. We did not meet that. And one of the things to understand right now, we're talking about the scores from two thousand sixteen-seventeen, so that was really, kids were taking the test a year ago. We have scores trickling in right now for this school year, but everything you're seeing in this report is based on the scores from the sixteen-seventeen school year. So we did not meet that metric. The one B was to increase the percentage of students, English learners, meeting the California English learner indicator. We did meet that. I'll go into a little bit more detail of what that is in a bit. And then to have one-hundred percent of our staff properly credentialed, our teaching staff, and to continue providing standards-aligned materials to our students. So there have been some significant shifts in accountability. We've shared this information a few board meetings ago when this came out back in the fall, but just to kind of review, the California dashboard looks at two things. It looks at status, so they want to see our kids performing high on the Smarter Balance assessments, and they also want to see us getting better one year to the next. So you can see, the status is going up. This looks at the average scaled score for all the students in the school, for different subgroups, grade levels, and measures the distance from the lowest score that you can get to be at standard met, which is the goal for college and career. And then it looks at a school-wide, subgroup-wide change from year to year, looking to get increased by seven to twenty points, and they change a little bit in English and Math. So the academic indicator is broken up by grade level spans from grades three through eight. In English Language Arts, for our district, the CMI is parsed out separately, so this is only looking at Paris Union High School District students in grades five through eight, essentially Pentecostal Middle School. So the all-student subgroup was in yellow. Our SED and Hispanic subgroup was orange, and yellows and students with disabilities in the red, homeless and African-American in the orange. And so, once again, on this, blue is the highest ranking that you can get, green the second highest, yellow, orange, and red. In math, and once again, this is going back to sixteen-seventeen test scores, all subgroups except for the students with disabilities were in the red, and so we knew we had challenges to work with on math. Early indicators are showing that the middle school did a much better job this year, and we should see some improvements for this indicator. So the English learner progress indicator, I mentioned earlier, this consists of two different things. It's looking at the English language development assessment. So this is a test for our English learners to see if they're improving on their English language development, and it also looks at the percentage of students that reclassify, that go from an English learner to a reclassified fluent English proficient student. Means that a student was an English learner, they've gained the skills in listening, speaking, reading, and writing, to no longer need services in English language development. So the data that we see from the dashboard, it's once again based on two thousand sixteen SALT data. So the test of kids took about a year and a half ago, and two thousand fifteen-sixteen reclassification data. The fall two thousand eighteen dashboard that we'll report to you in the fall of next year should come out, hopefully in October, November-ish of this year, came out in December last year. We took a new English language development assessment called the LPAC. It's based on the new two thousand twelve ELD standards, so this will be a baseline year. We're going to see a status only. You can't really compare it to anything because it's the first time that the schools, the state, has taken this test. And it'll also look at the two thousand sixteen-seventeen reclassification data. Good news on the reclass data, we have seen improvements from years, from the prior years, so that'll help us on that. We did outstanding in all of our different, at all the schools and the district overall. We had the status of very high and increased significantly. Paloma had an increase, which is great also, so we did really well on that one. The college and career indicator, this is the metric that'll be coming out in the fall two thousand eighteen dashboard, so we had informational only in the fall of two thousand seventeen, but this year will be the first year that we'll have the status and the change, and then therefore the dashboard designation. So it incorporates multiple metrics, including the percentage of students that, actually it's based on a per-student basis, so the student has multiple opportunities to prove that they're college and career ready. So they have scores on the Smarter Balance assessment, scores on the advanced placement assessments, A-through-G, CTE pathways, and a whole bunch of different options. It actually goes A-through-E and gives kids different opportunities to meet that. So our percentage of students that came out in the fall was thirty-four percent for overall. That's pretty similar to the A-through-G information, and I'm going to, I'll let Julie share a little bit more detail on that. And then we see similar achievement gaps for our subgroups for the different areas. And then for the percent approaching, it was twenty-four percent overall, and then once again, similar achievement gaps. Next steps, in terms of the LCAP, there's no changes to the goal. There's changes in metrics, and one of the differences, this is a calculation based on the CDE. They gave quote-unquote "extra credit" for LTLS that meet the language development assessment. So essentially, you get one-point-five points per student if the student meets their goal to increase the level. So that drastically changed the calculation, especially for us being a high school district. About ninety-three percent of our students are LTLS, so we had to change the metric. Basically, gives us, makes us strive for a little bit higher goal. So we're looking at ninety-four percent as opposed to seventy percent of what it was before. And then also, the school dashboard itself doesn't include dashboard color designation for the eleventh-grade SPECT scores, but they do provide that data. We think it's important that we're looking at all students, so not just the students that meet the higher three or four band, but we're looking at kids that move from a low Level One to a Level Two, and that incorporates all students. So that's one change in the metric, which is how we measure our progress. And then new actions, action two-H, we have teachers at each of the schools that are released to support teachers and English learners, and we have one of the sections pulled out of categoricals to allow them to do teacher-needed duties that are not categorically allowed. So that's the minor change on the actions and services. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Yerel.
All right. Good evening, board. I'm here to talk about goal two, which is to look at our college and career readiness for our students. So two-A is maintain the percentage of students meeting high school graduation requirements between ninety-two and ninety-four percent. So you probably recall that we talked a little bit about graduation requirement, about our graduation rate at the beginning of the school year. We talked about having actually a higher percentage, but just recently, the U.S. Department of Education has audited the California Department of Education and said that they were not measuring students by all of the metrics that they should be measuring them by. So what they took out of consideration from the U.S. Department of Education was students that were enrolled in adult ed, as well as students that didn't complete high school and were enrolled in community college. So before, those students were actually counted as, not counting against us as dropouts. So now, and this is still not finalized data, it has not been posted yet, but this is our projection for what is to come out. So we did show a decrease here because of the change in how the California Department of Education is being required to calculate our percentage. Increase our A-to-G completion by three percent. We did not meet that. We had a slight decrease. Increase AP enrollment and AP pass rate by three percent. We partially met this goal. We're seeing lots of increases in our enrollment and still working on increasing our amount of students that are passing the AP exam. Two-D is increasing by three percent, the number of high school juniors meeting or exceeding the standard on the ELA and math components of the CASP. So similar to what Mr. Tippi was just talking about in regards to the eleventh grade, our students in English met that metric, but they did not meet that metric in math. And then our increased CTE pathway enrollment was met. The completion by three percent annually, that's to be determined. That is one of the calculations that's now being included in the college and career indicator, and so we will be measuring it based on a different metric moving forward. And then increasing the number of students enrolled in AVID by four percent annually. We did meet that metric. And then increase our district FAFSA completion by five percent annually. We did not meet that this year. So here's just a glance at our graduation rate. So like I said, the graduation data is not official yet. It still has not been officially posted, but our projection is ninety-point-six, where it was ninety-two-point-one originally. You probably remember this graphic from our presentation at the beginning of the year when it was the original release of the preliminary numbers, where we were at ninety-two-point-one. So I'd like to add that the decrease in graduation rate applies to everybody in the state of California. So based on the new metric and how their graduation rate's being calculated, every district in the state will see between a two and a three percent decrease in graduation rate based on that calculation because of those students being removed from the category of being considered still enrolled. Our district A-to-G completion, we had a slight decrease as a district. We went down by just about one and a half percent. We have gone through and identified some of our challenges and addressed those, so look to see some improvement in the A-to-G completion for this year moving forward. But this is our two thousand sixteen-seventeen data. And then our three-year advanced placement analysis. As you can see, our enrollment has increased significantly as we continue to promote our AP program and also the improvement of adding our AP collaborative this year. So our enrollment was twenty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-seven students. We are not seeing the pass rate increase that we'd like to see. Obviously, we're waiting for our two thousand seventeen-eighteen scores from this year, but we did see a decrease in the pass rate for AP. As far as our CTE enrollment, you'll see that we've had an increase every year for the last three years in our CTE enrollment, so we did meet that metric. Moving forward, we will be measuring completers based on how CTE measures, or CDE measures them in CalPads. So our metric will, next year, actually keep in mind the completers based on what's reported in CalPads. As far as our AVID graduation, this is our two thousand seventeen-eighteen. Um, as far as our Avid graduation, um, this is our two thousand seventeen eighteen numbers, we had two thousand one hundred and five students enrolled in Avid, that's a twelve percent growth from the previous year. We continue to see our students be successful in, um, the Avid program where a majority of their students are, um, graduating, meeting the A to G requirements as well as having a hundred percent graduation rate, um, last year in six, in sixteen seventeen. Obviously, we hope to see the same thing this year with our Avid students moving forward. Um, as far as our early assessment program site data, this is our eleventh grade students taking the English and math, um, CASP. And you'll see that we did meet that metric in our English, um, scores, but did not meet that in our math scores. We showed a slight decrease in math, but we did show some improvement and met our metric in regards to the English in two thousand seventeen. Whoa. Think I must've hit something on the bottom. Um, district completion for our FAFSA, we had seventy percent last year in two thousand seventeen for our FAFSA completion. We did show a slight decrease, um, by about two, um, point eight percent. Um, we've, we've seen a, a kind of a discrepancy in students completing the FAFSA. Um, I think that, that's attributed to a variety of reasons in regards to students and their families not feeling comfortable, um, sharing some of their, um, personal information. We continue to push that and really support our students and hopefully, um, make them more aware of what that data is being used for, to provide funding for them to attend college, not for any other use. Um, some of our students and families have a difficult time, um, wanting to share that information. Um, but our preliminary numbers for this year and the FAFSA completion show an increase in percentage for our FAFSA completion. And moving forward for next year, our LCAP, there's no changes to the actual goal for next year. We are replace- replacing the LEA CTE course completion with the college and career indicator. Um, so rather than using the current metric that we've been using for CTE, we'll be moving to the CalPads data, um, that is, um, part of the college and career indicator for next year. And then all of our actions and services remain the same, um, with the exception of the addition at the very bottom where we're gonna provide students not meeting high school graduation requirements, uh, with alternative options for credit recovery. We're working with our alt ed program, trying to in- improve the opportunities for students to get more credits and get more students access to our alt ed programs. With that, I'd like to hand it off to Mr. Herman for goal number three.
Good evening. I'm gonna be going over four specific goals with you. Three A with, had to do with bullying, drug use, violence. We did not meet our goal of trying to reduce each of those referrals and suspensions by five percent. We did meet the disproportionality goal for sped students and African American students by reducing those suspensions, um, by one percent and we did not meet our attendance goal of, uh, improving attendance by two point five percent and we remained in compliance, goal met, three D with the Williams compliance. If you look at the chart, um, the first numbers are the numbers of referrals in each of the columns. So, if you look at two thousand seventeen eighteen, one hundred and forty-seven referrals for bullying followed by the number of suspensions. So, you'll notice an increase across the board in bullying, drug-related violations and violence. Uh, most of the drug, the vast majority of the drug-related violence, the drug-related violations were marijuana-related. Suspensions and expulsions, um, I'll start at the very end with expulsions. Uh, we did notice a rather significant increase of total expulsions in the district from eighteen to twenty-five. And then if you look at each of the suspensions by subgroups, you'll notice an inch, an increase in each of the categories. African American, uh, suspensions virtually remain the same as they were last year. Disproportionality, here's an area where we did show some growth. If you look at the, the last column for the African American students, the gap, you'll notice that we did reduce by almost two percent, uh, the number of suspensions for African American students and then for sped students, it was almost a six percent decrease. So, that's definitely a direction we wanna move in. Chronic absenteeism, chronic absenteeism is defined as any student missing ten percent or more of the school year for any reason, whether it be excused or unexcused. The, the absentee rate, the chronic absentee rate was virtually exactly the same the last two years. You notice some slight decreases in each of the subgroups, but overall it was exactly the same as it was last year. Our attendance rate was almost identical last year to this year, um, and each of the subgroups were pretty consistent for the last two years. So, moving into next school year, there'll be no changes made to the goals, uh, the matrices will remain the same. Basically, what we're gonna try to do is really improve school climate and access for students to participate in extracurricular and, and extracurricular activities. Connecting students to activities, groups, clubs really will help reduce all of the things that I covered and keep kids connected to school which is our ultimate goal. I'm gonna turn things over to Ms. Martin.
All right. Wrapping it up, goal four, we had four actions and services that we identified through our LCAP. So, four, uh, four A establishing family-friendly volunteer policies to recruit and organize help and support from parents, we partially met that. I'll go into more detail in our next slide on each of these services. Uh, four B expand trainings, workshops, courses for parents, community members to build capacity and connections that will empower, engage, connect parents to support student academic achievement, we met that. Four C identify and integrate resources and services from the community to strengthen school programs, family practices and student learning and development, we met that. Four D ensure that schools have a system in place with multiple strategies to facilitate two-way communication with staff, parents and community members, um, we met that as well. So, going back to our first one, the establishing family-friendly policies to recruit and organize, uh, we partially met that, we are in the process of com- oh, I, I swear. Was that me? What? Oh, okay. I don't think I turned the lights off though, I think that was Charles. Um, so, so we have, uh, so our plan this year is to, we, we're gonna be working with HR to develop our volunteer packet, um, to update our board policies. I, is it me? Okay. Okay, I'm not gonna touch anything. Um, it's not me? Okay, thank you, Vicky. All right, so we continue to work with HR to develop, um, and improve our board policies so that we can, um, bring our parents, um, on our campus to help support, um, and close the achievement gap and we can partner together. Uh, we participated this year for the first time in the National Parent Involvement, uh, Day district-wide and that was a great success. We continue to use our information canopies throughout the campuses on special events. Those are information hubs for our campuses to utilize. So, moving forward, our goal is to, um, have parent orientations and opportunities where we will cover fingerprinting, background checks, uh, working with HR to make sure we are following all of our policies and procedures, but I do feel that we are going to be updating our board policies on our parent volunteers. That is something that, um, is outdated and needs to be, um, improved. So, the second one, as you can see, we have some wonderful opportunities for our parents. Uh, we have increased, uh, by six percent our district-wide participation, so we have, as you can see, uh, many opportunities for our parents to participate across the district. We have satellite campuses that offer ESL, um, citizenship, nutrition, um, family literacy nights, computers, um, so we plan on expanding that, uh, throughout the district. Through our LCAP process, we have also identified, um, some funds to be able to provide a community, um, liaison or bilingual community aid for Paloma Valley High School this year, so then all of our sites will have, uh, parent, uh, connection with, uh, community aid. So, we're very excited about that. Our third, um, action and service that we identified, um, as we are integrating resources from our community, we did meet that. So, you can see some of our partnerships, as this list continues to grow, we have, um, through our LCAP hired our community engagement specialist and she's been working very diligently in providing opportunities for our parents and building networking opportunities and resources, um, through the community. We have also through our last action and services have really been utilizing social media, as you can see, this is just a snapshot of some of the summaries, but we have also, um, increased, um, and exceeded our ten percent, um, in communication access for our parents. We are excited to offer Peach Jar this year, so, uh, Sonia who's our community engagement specialist has been sending out some notifications and flyers to our staff as well as our parents. So, that'll be another opportunity where we can, uh, share information, um, not only from outside in our community to share, uh, through everything is, will be done electronically. So, we're very excited about that as well. And that continues to move on. Our, uh, next steps for LCAP goal four, the goal itself will not change. Uh, we are going to change one of our metrics as we have noted in this process that it's a duplicate when we reference in our LCAP, the parent involvement report card really duplicates our data collection on our district-wide parent participation metric, so we're going to remove that. We currently still have the district parent participation metric and we will keep that. There's no new actions and services, um, at this time. So, the only thing that I will add in addition to what Marilyn had shared as far as our next steps is the, um, we have a conference call or I have a conference call tomorrow with Riverside County Office of Ed, so they have had an opportunity to review our LCAP plan in its draft form, so tomorrow we'll be getting some information on their feedback. So, after tonight with your feedback and from the community, we'll take all of that information together, um, and on the twentieth present our final LCAP to you.
And it's really important that, that you, um, are aware of the fact that, um, Diane has really taken the lead, um, in making sure that all of the components of our LCAP actually meet all of the requirements and to the point that our COE really looks to us and, um, as, as examples. And also, ed services doesn't do this by themselves. We've had a lot of help in particular with, um, business services and HR and all the departments and all the divisions, so, um, it's, it's really a very, um, comprehensive job and work, so. Any questions?
At this time at seven oh eight PM, I'm, uh, opening this, uh, a regular board meeting for public comment, uh, to receive input comments regarding the LCAP for the eighteen nineteen school year. And I said seven oh eight. We're going to wait for a few seconds so I can close the, if we don't have any, anybody? Seven oh nine. If we don't have any comments or any input regarding the LCAP for the eighteen nineteen school year, uh, I'm closing this, uh, public hearing at seven oh nine PM. The next, uh, item is an action item, ten point two, business, a public hearing regarding the adoption of the eighteen nineteen district budget. Do I have a motion? Trustee Ellison, trustee Garcia?
Okay, well, good evening once again. Get to hear another presentation from me, have a different sidekick this time, Alicia Fogarty, our Director of Fiscal Services. And so, um, you know, we always start with the LCAP and the budget is built around, uh, the LCAP goals and priorities and so, uh, that's what you'll see here reflected, um, tonight. Uh, I wanna start with just a quick update of the California state budget. The last time we presented to you was at second interim, we were building the budget and multi-year projections at that time based on the governor's, uh, January budget proposal. We now have the May revise. Uh, the May revise is the last, uh, statutorily required revision to the governor's eighteen nineteen, uh, budget prior to adoption. It's what, uh, school districts, um, uh, build their budgets on, it's what we have built our, um, budget on and all of that is prior to the enactment of the, uh, state budget. Uh, you'll hear in the very end that if the, uh, final budget changes, um, and requires us to revise our budget, we would do that within forty-five days. Um, so I jumped to the end. Um, so the May revision, uh, revenue forecast, uh, for eighteen nineteen is, uh, increased, uh, this is for the entire state budget, let me be clear, uh, by eight billion dollars, but the impact to proposition ninety-eight which is the school portion of the budget, uh, guarantee, the proposition ninety-eight minimum guarantee, um, was minor. There was a lot of speculation, um, that the May revise was gonna look a lot better, um, for schools then actually came to fruition, part of that because, uh, state revenues were at four billion dollars as of April, it's projected, uh, eight billion, um, as of the, the close of the year. Um, so, what is in the May revision for school? Uh, three point two billion dollars for funding, um, beyond full implementation of the LCFF, that's three hundred and twenty million above the January level. Uh, that provides the two point seven one percent, uh, COLA and additional LCFF funding in eighteen nineteen for a, a total increase of three percent on the LCFF, uh, base grants. Um, and then offsetting mandate reimbursement, uh, claims the May re- revise includes two point oh four billion or two hundred and eighty-six million above the January level, um, for the one-time, um, funds, uh, which is three hundred and forty-four dollars per ADA. And that's just a different way of looking at the, uh, difference in the January budget to the May revise. Um, I really just wanna call your attention to in eighteen nineteen, um, I spoke about the eight billion dollars, uh, difference in the budget, that's about seven hundred and twenty million, um, to proposition ninety-eight. Uh, here's a history of our proposition ninety-eight funding, the last three years beginning with fifteen sixteen, the slide is taken right from School Services of California by the way. Um, and so that, the last three years just so, show the difference in the January budget versus the, uh, May revise, uh, proposed funding. And you can see, um, you know, the last two years, that went up, um, ever so slightly, um, but not by quite as much for eighteen nineteen, uh, between January and May. So, progress towards our LCFF implementation and so you can see that when LCFF, uh, Marilyn spoke about this in the very beginning of their presentation, um, changed the funding model for school districts and so, um, to reach full implementation, that was originally expected to be eight years, we now will be at full implementation, uh, in six years and so you can see that represented on the, uh, chart or the graph there. So, um, how did the governor define full implementation? Um, that was the restoration of the K-12 funding levels that prevailed in two thousand seven, eight, the year before the Great Recession. That was prior to the deep co- cuts that were imposed on, um, revenue limits and the, and most of the categorical programs. Uh, restoration would include cost of living adjustments since two thousand seven, eight. Uh, the governor's goal was to reach full funding as I mentioned earlier, um, by twenty twenty, twenty-one which was an eight-year implementation period, um, and this reaches it two years, um, earlier than planned. Um, one thing of note, I think it's important to, um, understand the difference in full funding versus full implementation. Um, and I think I would be remiss if I didn't remind all of us that full implementation of a plan is very different than, than full funding and, um, school districts across the state, ours in particular, receiving an adequate amount of funding, um, because, you know, bringing us back to two thousand seven, eight levels, um, even with COLA certainly isn't enough funding, um, for our children. So, um, it's also important, uh, along that note to look at our purchasing power, um, under LCFF. The LCFF, um, addresses revenues, but we really need to talk about the costs over that same period of time. Um, the employer contribution, so our costs, um, as it relates to Calsters and Calpers have increased, um, to address, or have not increased rather, that would be good news if I, uh, that was correct, have not, uh, increased to address the unfunded, um, liability. And so, um, School Services of California did an analysis, um, that finds of the twenty billion in new dollars to schools that we've seen under LCFF, approximately two point eight billion of that, or fourteen percent of that has been used, uh, to cover those increased costs that we are seeing. Um, and so employer rates, um, as they, um, they'll, they'll continue to increase without additional, um, LCFF funding. So, um, so while local control funding formula, um, is intended to be for, uh, local control, um, a portion of that is predefined, um, for us. Um, and since full funding of the LCFF has not been adjusted for these local costs, really the purchasing power hasn't eat, hasn't been, uh, fully restored, also playing into the difference in full implementation versus, uh, full funding. And so, um, I think that's important really for all of us in that, this room to, you know, understand, um, especially when we're talking to, um, various stakeholders of our district community members and we certainly won't, don't want to give the impression that, um, schools are fully funded because that has quite a has quite a different meaning than full implementation. So COLA and automatic cost increase, we have to talk about as well. The LCFF with the target being reached, the projection in each of the years beyond this next year is for COLA only, again, beyond 2018. And so we have a number of automatic cost increases that make it challenging to merely maintain our current programs, and this is no different than other school districts across the state when you're in a COLA-only environment. We have, again, like I mentioned, our Calsters and Calpers increases, we have step and column that go up automatically, health and welfare costs for the district in terms of the contributions to employee premiums go up. And then contributions to our restricted programs, primarily special education as not only the population growth, but the student needs increase year after year. And so, and this is looking at an average school district, this is another chart from School Services of California. And so you can see in 2017, '18, we have our LCFF growth revenues totaling $248 per ADA. And then when we look at that for 2018, '19, it's about a 6.2% increase or $587, but then we have to pair that side by side with our expenditures, right? So we're getting new money, what are our new expenditures? Wouldn't be prudent of us not to look at both sides of the equation. And so, again, this is for an average district, but the STIRS rates, of course, are the same across the state. So the STIRS increase takes care of $145 of that per ADA, the PERS increases $51, step and column is about $145. And so just looking at those three components, the expenditures don't meet the amount of the new revenue, so there's more revenues than there are expenditures. But we also have to look at our special ed contributions as well. We also cannot look just at one fiscal year. It's the reason why we have to look at multi-year projections, because we have to look at what are the projections for the year, the next year, and the year after. And so when we move to 2019, '20, and we go through that same scenario, we're looking at an additional $253 on a per ADA basis made up of both of base and supplemental concentration. But then when we pair that side by side in 2019, '20 with our expenditures, you can see even without considering the special ed contribution, the new expenditures far outweigh the new revenues. And so it's why we have to look again at a multi-year projection, because we cannot make decisions today on certain expenditures that are ongoing that will impact the out years of the multi-year projection, or we would be, you know, in a poor financial situation. And you can see that as you go out through 2021 as well. But I thought that would be an important slide to make sure that we covered. I also spoke about contributions to special education, and again, this is on average. But in terms of the funding for special education, if we look in 1617, 20, almost 27% of that was made up of state funding, about 9% from federal funding. But over 64% of that across the state was made up from contributions, and those contributions come from the general fund that comes from our LCFF revenue. And so contributions again to special ed has to be a big consideration in the budget, particularly as we're planning in the multi-year projection. And so what are some budget conditions or considerations that we here in PUHSD need to consider? The revenue increases, as I mentioned earlier, of COLA only will be difficult following years of moderate to large revenue increases, as I mentioned during second interim. This is going to be even more difficult for districts like ours that have a high unduplicated pupil count, because we saw very large increases in the last several years in the supplemental and concentration arena. And now that we are at full implementation of LCFF, those increases will be limited just to COLA, which as you could see from the slide previously, we're in a 2% to 3% COLA environment. And so what that means unfortunately is that our new revenues will not cover our new costs, and that means planning in some cases for expenditure reductions and just very careful and mindful planning as we go through the multi-year projection. Those NYPD's multi-year projections, they, I can't stress this enough, they're just vital to the fiscal health of the district, and without a well-thought-out long-range planning, we're really doing ourselves a disservice. We continue to grow in enrollment in this district, as we are all in this room well aware. And so you will see when Alicia presents our budget, our information specific to our district budget, that we have the startup costs that's made up of one-time expenditures as well as the ongoing expenditures, which would be the added staffing, that's included in the multi-year projection. And, you know, I mentioned that because alongside the increased enrollment, because, you know, while, you know, we have a plan that we're working on to be able to fund, you know, that high school, which of course, you know, is Plan A, if that Plan A were not successful, that doesn't mean the students aren't showing up. We still would have the increased enrollment, we still would have almost all of the increased expenditures. We would have some different expenditures in terms of we would have to be putting portable classrooms on campuses and so forth. But nonetheless, we do still need to plan for that within the multi-year projection. And then, of course, adequate reserve levels to meet our multi-year projections. You know, sometimes you have to save in one year in order to afford the increased expenditures that we know are coming in the next year or the next years. And so also looking just at the state budget, the cap on district reserves, we talked a lot about this over the last year, proposition to establish the rainy day budget stabilization fund. There are four conditions that have to be met in order for the terms of that to apply to the school districts in the state. One of those has not been met, so we are not under those conditions quite yet. But so that everyone knows what that would mean, if all of those conditions are met for a district our side, it would cap, our size, would cap reserves at 10%. Currently, the state minimum, which I stress minimum, is 3%, and this would be capped at 10%. But again, those conditions are not met right now, and so that law does not take into effect in terms of the implications. And then one last slide from School Services of California, this is the unrestricted fund balances across the state. And so I draw your attention to high school districts like ours, ending fund balances at 17.25%. Ours is not anywhere near this arena, but I did want to show you at least what the state average was in terms of fund balances. And now I will turn it over to Alicia. If you recall, at second interim, she was homesick, and so you got to hear from me the whole way through, and now you'll get to hear from Alicia.
Good evening, Dr. Rao, Board Superintendent, Cabinet. I'm going to present the proposed 2018, '19 budget. And so we'll start off with how the majority of that is calculated, and that's with the LCFF calculations. So you take the 1718 initial base grants and you add any additional COLA to that to come up with your 1819 base grant. Just a caveat to the 1718, just a reminder that that was not fully funded, so we were at about 97%. So we didn't receive that full, excuse me, amount in like the 77,518 and 78 and 8,712 and nine through 12. So my voice is going out again, you want to take over? Excuse me. So also, you add on the grade span adjustments for CTE for the high schools at 2.6% to come up with the new adjusted base. And then we add in supplemental concentration, and those numbers are based strictly on our unduplicated count. So for supplemental, we get 20% of the adjusted base times at 20% in our unduplicated count. For concentration, we get 50% of anything over 55%. So because we're at 74.18%, we would get that difference between the 55 and 74% at 50%. So for our enrollment to ADA, historical trends and projections, if you look at 2013, '14, you notice we went down in enrollment quite a bit, but ever since then, we've been steadily increasing. So like Candace had said, you know, our enrollment is increasing and the students are coming. However, I would like to point out in 2017, '18, we did take a small dip in actual ADA, which is what we're funded off of, not enrollment, we're funded off of ADA. So we are projecting an increase next year based on just past historical trends with the, with the knowledge that we are also going to be implementing some district-wide Saturday schools in conjunction with what the school sites already do in order to boost up our overall ADA. So as Candace had said earlier, about 14% of the statewide new monies of LCFF has been used to fund the Calsters and Calpers increases. So for our district, over the seven-year period, for Calsters, that's over a $5 million increase, and for Calpers, it's a $2.1 million increase. Also, just so you know, Calpers will continue to rise, and by 2024, 24, '25, it will escalate up to 26%. So step and column and negotiated increases for each group are outlined above, and even though these are things that we know are going to happen, they rise on the natural, we need to include them in our budget and our multi-years, and it's really important because they are large increases, just like we plan for utility increases and things of that nature. So for PSCA, the increase overall for step and column, health and welfare, and the STIRS increase is $1.4 million. For CSCA, it's $579,000, for management confidential, $252,000, with an overall increase of $2.3 million just for these known increases. So I thought I would break out the expenditures by both a table and a chart, just because you can view it in different ways and be able to break it out. So one thing I would like to point out, though, in the unrestricted expenditures overall for certificated salaries, classified salaries, employee benefits is 79% of our unrestricted budget. And if you notice, the employee benefits in the restricted expenditures are high, that is due to the state requiring us to recognize the STIRS on behalf, which we recognize that both in the expenses and in the revenue, but it does increase our expenses. And so I thought I'd do the same thing with the revenues, so that you could see how the base or how LCFF is actually broken up, as well as the federal, state, local, and contribution. So just spending a minute on the LCFF, you can see that $20.5 million is supplemental concentration, another $13.6 million is for EPA. And while these may technically be unrestricted, they are reserved for specific needs. So supplemental concentration is obviously to increase and improve student achievement for unduplicated count, and EPA is to be utilized for classroom expenses. So for our unrestricted general fund multi-year projection, the estimated actuals, and these are just estimated at this time, we will not officially close our books until August, and then we will present the unaudited actuals to you in September. So this is basically just going off of historical trends of how things were spent in the last two months of this fiscal year. And so we're projecting that we will have received in total $87 million in revenues, spending $88.5 million in expenses, with leaving us with a deficit spending of $1.4 million and an ending fund balance of $8.5 million. Going into next year, the increase in revenue is attributed to both the 3% COLA and growth. So if you notice, going all the way to 2021, most of that increase that you see, that $2.3 million, is attributed to growth. So if that doesn't come to fruition, then, you know, we won't see that ending fund balance of $12.6 million. So of the ending fund balance, so even though the, let me just go back for a minute, so even though like you see 9.69% of the total ending fund balance, not all of that is for economic reserve. So some of it is, and I'll go into that more in detail, but some of it is restricted, and then some of it is the economic reserve. So of those other balances on the previous sheet, we eventually do get to the 6% in 2021, and then we have also have a little bit of money left in supplemental concentration that we're projecting will be fully utilized by 1920. And then the one-time set aside for high school four of $1 million, and then ongoing costs in 2021 of 1.7, which is actually $250,000 short of the $2 million that we're projecting, you know, that we would have saved from the growth. Just one thing I would like to point out, so Candace had said that, you know, if for some reason, high school four doesn't come to fruition, you know, we need to have portables and chairs and desks and things of that nature, when that is not tied to a facilities project, those types of items that we would still need to provide for the students, including teachers and support costs and computers and all of that stuff, would still have to be paid. So even if that didn't happen, and hopefully it does, but even if that didn't happen, there's still going to be costs associated that we need to plan for, because as you noticed in our enrollment trends, we are continuing to grow. So some of the other monies that we have that we're projecting that we'll end the year with is some projected carryover from one time of $834,000, and the unrestricted resource balances that are specific for other things like risk management, facility usage, lottery, et cetera. And then the non-spendable ending balance with revolving cash at $25,000. The unassigned unappropriated ending balances, the 418, 496 that you see carrying over, those are actually one-time monies that just have not been assigned yet, so that's why they fall into the unassigned ending balances. And then the transportation savings of almost $700,000, that is contingent on the realignment of the bell schedules for Pennacotti and Paris Lake. And if that goes through and comes to fruition, the intent of that is to give ongoing raise to our employees. So the summary of other district funds, we already talked about the unrestricted and restricted, but we're still, we're estimating in 2018, '19, the unrestricted will end with $9.2 million, restricted with 1.8. The charter school fund, which we'll go into more detail a little bit later on, at $2.2 million. Adult ed will fully utilize their revenue next year. The cafeteria fund will end in $569,000, the building fund, $84,000, capital facilities funds, $4 million, county school facilities fund, $1.1 million, and the debt service fund with a whopping $81 bucks. So what are the next steps? The next steps, the board will open a public hearing to receive input on the district's budget. A final budget will be presented to the board for approval on June 20th. The district's adopted budget, along with the district's local accountability plan, the LCAP will be reviewed by RCOE. And after the California state budget is adopted, the district's budget will be revised and presented to the board for approval if necessary. Are there any questions? Thank you.
No questions. Thank you, Alicia. Yes. Before we vote on this item, I'm opening this regular board meeting of the board's trustees to an open public hearing at 7:34 PM. So if anybody from the public would like to give us some input, some comments regarding the budget, including the board trustees, right? You would like to make any comments, input? Okay, in the meantime, we get to the time of 7:35, I would like to give my input. Okay, Ms. Beal.
I'm kind of concerned because, you know, normally I get like a heads up that there's going to be a budget presentation beforehand, and I know I don't sit on my email all the time, but, so you're asking us to give input on something that we just now saw? And then you're going to vote on in a month? Or are you going to vote on it today? Is this it for input? Because some of the numbers, because it's your budget, I mean, however you put the numbers, but some of the numbers, you know, CTA sends us to class. So I question some of the numbers, and I have to look at a couple others on some one-time monies that I wasn't seeing anywhere in there, and where is that one-time money being used? It was $344 per ADA or something like that that's coming into play. So I just want to know, can I get a copy of this next time in advance? So I just want to know, can I get a copy of this next time in advance? Normally, I get it, you know, early in the day, so that I can at least have a more cohesive response or look at it. So I would just like to take a little bit more time.
Thank you, Ms. Mueller. I think that is a valid, valid point. Can we answer this?
This, this is the same process we've used since we started the LCFF LCAP process. The board meeting, the first board meeting in June is the budget and the LCAP presentation. So we haven't changed anything that's been going on for, what, about four or five years? And it's in the...
Yeah, but did she get a copy?
It's posted, well, it's posted on the agenda.
That's what I was going to comment, that this agenda was published when?
Last week.
Laurie, last week, right? Yes, and the information is attached, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So I invite any member of the public, whenever we see the agenda, to click on those attachments, and then we can see the information with enough time, right? Because actually, we, this year, we increased the time before the board meeting to, so the public can ask, we have access to the agenda with more, with more time.
I just, in the past, I don't know who's opposite was, but I always got a copy of it before.
Okay. Oh yeah, but you can print a copy, Ms. Mueller. When you get on the, in your computer, you get on the agenda, just click the attachment, and you can... Can we, can we give a copy? Yeah, okay, yeah, sure.
Maybe both of you needs to be fair.
Okay, any, any other comment or input?
I may be looking at it wrong, but, oh, Josh Rushing, I'm the chief steward of CSCA. On one of the slides, it showed, it said that the cafeteria funding had $800,000 left in it. We're talking about laying off people. So I don't know if I misread something or what that was about for the end of this year. So if you could answer that, I'd appreciate it.
So I'm happy to answer that question. So the cafeteria fund projected ending balance for 1819 is $569,72. So close. But we have to remember again, multi-year projections. And in the earlier presentation tonight, when we spoke of increased food costs, those go up, you know, year after year. We also have some additional staff costs in there as well, as we're looking through because of the action, I think, that you take on the next item.
Do you have any questions from the Board of Trustees in terms of Miss Candace Ryan's explanation?
I just want to reiterate the word, "projected."
Okay, any other input? I would like to mention that based on this presentation, obviously, the picture doesn't seem to be really good, right? We are looking at some negative numbers, some projected negative numbers. So we would like to be part of the, of the solution. And we are a district that overall the budget is almost $100 million, right? And we were talking about a layoff of employees who make $800, $900 a month. And we talked about this last, during the last board meeting. So I would like to ask the Board of Trustees to support me on asking Mr. Bennett, not cabinet, because technically, Mr. Bennett is the only one who works for the Board of Education, right? So I would like your support on asking Mr. Bennett to provide a report to us as soon as possible in terms of how much did we spend during this school year, '17, '18, on professional development, quotation marks, travel out of state for the district administration? And a lot of administrators, that we were making presentations in terms of, oh, these are the wonderful things that are happening at Paris Union High School District, right? And I would like to know, how much was that? Is it the $40,000, is it the $50,000? How much is what we are doing? In my opinion, and I have brought this before, right? Every decision has to be done through the filter of how that is going to benefit our students, right? So I would like to know, what is the direct effect of sending administrators to Washington or Chicago or different places to present the wonderful things that are, that are, that are happening here? How is that benefiting our students in classroom 208, let's say, at Paris High School, directly? That is one thing. But specifically, how much? The amount of money, because we're talking about budget, how much is what we spent on out-of-state, including in interstate at Palm Springs, San Francisco, in total? Food, travel, airfare, and all those kind of things. So I'm asking for your support in terms of that because in my experience, and I, you know, I know Mr. Bennett for many years, and I have asked him sometimes for information. And a lot of times, he can say, yes, I'm going to provide this or something like that. And later on, wow, it's just one board member, the one who is asking me that, right? I need to get the request from everybody, from the Board of Education. And he's right, right? He's right, it's just, it's just me, it's just one. So that's why I'm asking you if you would approve this, this request, as well is the ratio of administrators with certificated staff and classified staff. Because it is my understanding that legally, Mr. Scarpagni, there is some ratio, right? Between number of certificated administrators with certificated staff and classified? I don't remember the ratio.
No, there isn't actually a legal requirement of that necessarily, but it's, you know, it's based on the board decision.
Yes.
You know, what the staffing is with that.
I, I would like to, to know that, yeah. Also, and again, just trying to be part of a, of the solution, and probably is going to be just a few thousand dollars. In the last meeting, there was a comment from some of our stakeholders that we are spending a significant amount of money on consultants. So I would like the board also to support this request if we can be told how much during the '17, '18 school year we spend in consultants, right? Somebody mentioned $4 million. I don't know if it's four or three or two, whatever the number it is, right? We're just wondering. And lastly, the ADA, I noticed that for middle school was about $9,600 per student, right? ADA. For high school was $11,500, close to $11,500. So if we ran it off, let's say $11,000, right? During the presentation, I noticed that we had 92% of ADA. And that's what we get paid for. Not the 10,565 students that we have enrolled, but the students who show up to get the class. Ninety-two percent, honestly, is really, really low, right? Really low. One percent, so if we have 10,000 students, we run it off to 10,000 students, 1% of 10,000, 10% would be 1,000, so it would be 100, right? 100 students times $11,000? 1.1 million. 1.1 million. I, I think something reasonable, from my perspective, my experience, that is not that much, I don't have that much knowledge, would be around 95, close to 95 point something percent of ADA, that it would be at the bottom. So we're talking about 3.3, 3.4 million dollars that we can bring into the budget of $99, $99. If we can support that. So this is my, my...
Can I add to your...
Sure.
In support of what you're asking, I would like to, I don't know if I have to amend it or add to it, but when there's a consultant that the district is interested in hiring, I'm going to ask that the board actually be the ones to finalize that and vote on that before they're hired? So if we could have a say-so in that, to help, to help manage the money?
All right, so summarizing, do we have any other, any other item or thing that you would like to add to this request, so we can put it kind of in a package before we vote and we transfer this to the...
Yes.
Is this on the minutes also?
I agree, in the interest of tightening our belts and looking for every dollar that we need to find to save jobs and get the money into the hands of our classified and certificated people, that we should go line by line and look at every item. The information is there in your agendas and can be clicked on, but we do need to take that extra time to really study those, those points and those issues and find out where that money is. There was one thing here on page 21. You know, it was stated that 79% of our budget is going towards salaries. We're inching, we're, we're past the number that I'm comfortable with. Seventy-four percent maybe, but 79%, we're getting way out of whack on salaries here. And I noticed you have certificated salaries and classified salaries, but administrative salaries aren't included here.
They're segregated.
Yeah, so I, I don't know, where is that? That's in certified?
Well, I certificated management and classified management, right? I'm sorry, that is for you, not for me.
Okay, so it should be separated out, so we understand what the dollar amount for each is. So if, if we could do that, I'd, I'd get a better understanding. So I do agree with what you're saying, Dr. Rouse, and you have my support on that.
Okay, salaries. Okay, summarizing, and probably this is going to be, not probably, it will be on the minutes. So we are asking for a total cost, the investment on the '17, '18 school year for PD in any kind, not necessarily PD, any kind of travel from administrators to any kind of conference or presentation or recognition or any kind of money that, I mean, the district is paying for personnel, right? That is one of them. Number two, the ratio of administrators, classified and certificated. Number three, the total amount of consultants that was paid during the '17, '18 school year. With the request that effective today, every consultant... Can you rephrase your proposal?
So we'll have the final...
I'm sorry?
It comes to you first. We always have to, we always have to...
But that is not so minimum?
They'd be working very hard, not us. No, they work for the board. The consultant, quite often, yeah.
Okay. What, what about, and if, I know, but I got an idea what you might be addressing, Mr. Garcia. What about if, instead of putting those elements in the consent calendar? Because the consent calendar, my understanding, is for routine elements, something that every single month is happening, something that, yes, that is something that is, is going to be happening. Let's say we have to pay the utility bill, electricity. It has to happen, right? It's not, we're not going to function without electricity. But anything that is not that routine, and probably we can talk about it, can be in an action item. It's going to take us a few more minutes, but I promise you, I'm going to go fast. On that, I'm going to go 3.5, this and that. So we are completely aware in not approving all the items at once without the discussion, how you were talking, what you were talking about, Tony. What do you think?
Well, I'd like that opportunity to be able to make revisions if we need to. If we see we're embarking on a project that we, we have the ability to change our minds and realize it's too expensive at this time, let's redirect that money. Let's do that and make those changes, so...
And if it's in the consent calendar, then you cannot do that, because then you need to pull that item, or...
Well, it, it's a, it's a process to it versus if it's an action item, because I agree with that, yes, yes.
Okay. Do you capture the essence of... Is it the recording?
It is.
Okay.
Consultants go on action.
Consultants go on action, not on the consent calendar. Pretty good, excellent, excellent summary, you know? Okay. And I would like to see a comprehensive plan developed with strategies focused on increasing ADA from 92%, at least, I would say, 90, 95%. Do you think that is something reasonable that we can, is, would that be kind of a SMART goal? Specific, measurable, achievable? 3% increase, comprehensive plan. Now, the next question is, when do you think, oh, maybe this question would be for Mr. Bennett, right? What could be a reasonable timeframe? Because that's the other element of the SMART goal, right? What could be a reasonable timeframe to get this information? With the exception of the consultants, we're going to, they are going to be on the agenda. That is a process.
Right. I'm sure we have by the 20th or not. It's probably the July meeting.
July? August?
August.
August, May? Okay, okay. So, I, is it reasonable to me?
Yes.
Tony, would you agree with that? Okay, all right. So that is the proposal, to make it official. If you agree, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, it has been approved, 5-0, so Mr. Bennett. We are expecting this information in the board meeting in the month of August of this year. Yeah, okay. Now we are going to close the public hearing at 7:52 PM. Let's continue. Okay, so we are still in action, item 10.2. Mr. Nelson and Mr. Garcia, if you can please vote? Okay, action item 10.2 has been approved. Four in one, what would be the, you know, abstention? In one abstention. Four in favor, one abstention. Next item, 11.1 is a personnel item, resolution number 38, '17, '18. Notice of reduction of workday layoff of classified unit members for the '18, '19 school year. Do I have a motion? Trustee Twymon? Trustee Nelson? Any comments, trustees, before we vote on this item?
You'd ask us to...
I'm sorry?
You'd ask us last month to come back with an, with the option of, on this item.
On this item, okay, yes. Before we, we vote, we are going to hear the options. And I just want to say thank you to my colleague board members for supporting that proposal and moving the vote to this board meeting after we hear the options that we have in order to address this important situation that we have with our employees. Thank you.
So while, there we go. Actually, oh, can you go to the slide that said "thank you," and then I'll... Couple more. There we go, and then you can go to the, here. Okay, so, oh, are we ready? Okay, so as was mentioned in the initial recommendation for the layoff of 39 labor hours, the, and I think I mentioned that 13 of those labor hours were made up of currently vacant hours. Those hours over the last few weeks have since increased to 19. We had a couple of resignations. And that is expected to grow to at least 25 by the end of the school year. And so the budget and multi-year projections were adjusted to reflect that decrease of the 25 hours. the, the twenty-five hours as well as to project, and it's important to understand it's a projection, that we could reduce nine hours in each of two thousand nineteen, twenty, and twenty twenty-one. With those factors, the fund balance for nutrition services is twenty, in twenty twenty, twenty-one, would be just over sixty thousand dollars, one point one two percent. That, that is a dangerously low ending balance. The California Department of Education recommends five months, and, and that caps at five months operating expenditures in nutrition services. And so it would be important to note that if the board wanted to entertain this, this alternate or optional recommendation that even with those labor hour reductions, and, and while they may not materialize because we're projecting, you know, the additional nine, other factors such as further increased food costs or, or a loss in participation, that careful balance that Audrey and I were talking about earlier, either of those would reduce the ending fund balance either for, even further. And so the district certainly, the board could make a decision to provide a general fund contribution to nutrition services if they were to have a, a negative ending fund balance. Sarah, would you mind advancing one slide? And so with the release of the Governor's May revise, also, you know, a more recent development, just as the labor hour reduction was, you know, getting us up to that twenty-five, there's an additional forty-nine dollars per ADA above those original projections from January. And so based on this, the district is amending its recommendation, should the board so desire, to instead maintain all of the existing positions and only laying off the vacant positions. It is important to recognize that while existing employees would have the same number of hours per day, so their paychecks would not be effective, but staffing would need to be rebalanced because the resignations wouldn't necessarily all come from, you know, equal school sites. We want to make sure that we're serving our students, of course, that's to be our first priority. And so start and end times and site assignments may need to change, you know, as a result of that. And so along with that recommendation, those additional one-time dollars would, right now they're sitting in the ending balance, as Alicia mentioned, as unassigned, unappropriated. Those would then be assigned for nutrition services until their fiscal health could get back on track, or if those hours through attrition didn't materialize as fast as, as we have currently projected. And, and of course, as we mentioned earlier, we're still going to work to decrease and contain our costs in other areas, you know, to the extent possible, you know, without losing participation, so.
So from, from what I hear in Ms. Raines, if we keep our employees potentially, the reserve can be go lower than one point two percent. However, we can compensate that with the potential investment that this board did not approve for one of the, for an extra administrator. Is that what we are saying? So we can use part of that money in order to supplement that?
That, that wasn't what this recommendation was. You, you can, you can do that. What this would be doing is, if that ending balance fell below zero, so right now it would be projected to be about sixty thousand into, at the end of the second year and the multi-year, the second year out, rather, so three years from now, that we would use the general fund one-time monies because we would eventually hope to bring nutrition services back to self-sustaining. It wasn't, in terms of this recommendation tied to a certain money or anything like that, other than the one-time funds.
Yeah, well, I, I, I am not saying specifically what was going to be used for that administrator that we said, no, we, we cannot, we don't want to do, to do that because we can use the, the money here. I'm saying it because I noticed also, they said, well, in the future, if we go lower than we, next year, we can reduce the number of hours or continue with this. But I think with that money is more than enough to cover that for next year. Wouldn't you say that? I don't know if I'm explaining myself.
Well, it, it really, really, that like the forty-nine dollars is general fund money, forty-nine dollars per ADA is general fund money, and the money you're talking about is general fund money also, it's special, special ed general fund because it's a contribution part. So it's really come out of the same, same pool of money. So it's, it's not specifically designated saying this money that was set is going to be used for administrators is being moved over to cover nutrition service.
No, 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 not, not directly. We're starting with the point that we cannot do that directly, but if we supplement this categorical money, let's call it categorical for the sake of understanding it, if we are going to supplement it with general fund, because we are spending that on an administrator, now we are not spending it on an administrator, then we don't, we don't need to supplement it, that one, then we can use this money for our employees.
Yeah, so.
Redirecting the money. So I'm just sa- saying because I don't like, next year, we are again with the same situation. And I don't want.
I think, I think we also have to, I'm sorry. I think we also have to take into account that, that nutrition services is supposed to be self-sustaining. This should not be an ongoing thing where we keep supplementing nutrition services from the general fund. They're supposed to be self-sustaining. So if we need to make a one-time contribution, that might be necessary, but if we continue to do it on a regular basis, then we actually have to take action and, and reduce hours or lay people off because it's not sustaining itself. That's the problem that we're coming across. One-time contribution may be, may be acceptable, but we cannot have an ongoing thing because it's supposed to be sustaining itself.
Yeah.
Yeah, and unfortunately, the cost of food just keeps going up, and that's becoming a serious issue. So I don't know what, what the remedy for that is.
No, that, that, that makes sense, you know? The, the only thing is, for example, I was just thinking out loud, when we were reducing one point nine million dollars, if we invested like close to five hundred thousand, that's close to twenty-six, twenty-seven percent of that funding, to advertise or to make it the, the food of the program attractive to students, in my thinking is, if we are not competing with somebody else, right? Why invest that kind of money? And that is not going to happen again. Somebody can counter-argue with, well, Paris High School students, they can cross the street and we are competing against those, those places, but it is my understanding that only seniors, right, are the ones who can leave. We have the principal here, and that could be only Paris High School, but we have Paloma Valley that I don't remember seeing any McDonald's or anything the students can, or Heritage High School, so. Yeah, so I, I just thinking of that, that we might not have that, but that is a good point, yeah.
So maybe we should have discussion on having closed campuses then, so that we can be announced.
Mostly now that we are offering really good food and healthy and, right? Because that is the objective, that's what we want for all of our, all of our students. Yeah. Okay, okay. I, I just wanted to, because I want to have in the minds of employees, okay, next year we are going to go over this because it's, it's stressful for, for them not knowing about that.
And so, just, so for the record, Edward, Mr. Garcia asked me to go through the, the options again, and so, if that's all right. And so there's the initial recommendation that we go forward, with the initial one, go forward the layoff. And there's the one that we're looking at right now, which is an optional recommendation, and as Mr. Nelson said more eloquently than I did, the reason the recommendation, because, so first choice would be the projections that we've made in terms of the twenty-five, the nine, and the nine hours come to fruition, and we don't ever end up with a negative fund balance. But because that balance is so close, we've got to have a Plan B. And so the Plan B, rather than the, the special education administrator that you were speaking of, because that would be ongoing, to instead use one-time dollars, because this should be a one-time fix, not something, you know, forever and ever. So those, those would be the two recommendations, the two options that we have.
Okay, well, I, I, just for clarification, what's here, when I click the link on, on the, what's proposed, it's the initial. So which one are we voting on currently? We're, because the one that's posted is the initial, we would be voting on the initial, correct?
Right.
Okay. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Sorry, just to be clear, we are, we would be voting on the initial proposal, which was the one we, we saw, we heard a couple of weeks ago, for the work reduction and layoffs.
Yeah.
What we would have to do is we do, you have to amend the, the, which would be Carolyn's, since she made the motion, amend the motion for the optional recommendation. Or we can vote this down, and then we'd have to create a, create an entire new motion in order to. Amend, that's what I was thinking, amending the, the motion. So Carolyn made the motion, she would have to make the, the, if she doesn't want to amend it, that's on, that's up to her, but, yeah, it would, it would have to be Carolyn's amended.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, sir. Join the meetings. Yeah, but we are going to go to, what, what item is that one? What number? Nine? Twelve point one? Eleven point one. Thank you, eleven point one. Am I there? Yes. Okay. All right. So. What could be, what could be easier? Acting on this one or making the amendment, Larry? What would you recommend? Yeah. Okay, so if, do I have a motion first, again? Oh, it was Mr. Twyman, right? And Mr. Nelson. Okay, just to be, to be clear, and we can talk about this, based on what we have discussed in the elements of this action item, I cannot approve this action item, as it is right now. So that's what we are doing, if you consider that it's the individual decision of each of you, so. So we want to make the amendment, you said?
Sorry, I would like to propose an amendment to the, the current motion that, I'm sorry, Ms. Rico, can you put, possibly put that previous slide up, back up on the screen, please? That one right there, please. Where I, I'm proposing an amendment to the motion to, to go with this optional recommendation, which would include not laying off any, any employees or reducing hours, just essentially going forward with, with what we currently have and using attrition to, to help get back on, under, but, under budget essentially, and then having Plan B be the one, possible one-time contribution from general fund to supplement until, until we're back into a positive balance. So I, I, I made the, I made the amendment proposal. Ms. Twyman, you made the, the original motion, so you would have to accept that amendment, and then we could vote on it.
Okay. I accept the amendment.
Dr. Rouse?
Yes.
So could Mr. Skorpanich add one thing in here as, as we're working, moving, before we move forward?
Before we move forward, let's listen to Mr. Skorpanich.
So I just, just for clarification, because I want to make sure that we clearly understand whether a person is in the position or not, whenever you lose a position even through attrition, that's referred to as a layoff, and legally that is a layoff of the position itself. So the easiest way to do this, because it also is tied to a resolution that's here that the board signs, the best way and the cleanest way of doing this, not only for the board, for the, for the public, is to vote on this item as it stands, and it sounds, and I think the, the idea has already been presented on what the outcome of that will be, and then come back with the revised resolution for the next board meeting to identify the specific vacant positions, so that way both the board and the public knows specifically what they're voting on. And that next meeting would be the twentieth.
And I, I tend to agree with you, because I was not even thinking about the vacant positions that would need to be laid off anyways in order to come back to, to a positive balance, so. So I'm, we're, we're just like going round and round in circles here, so.
Okay.
So.
Let's, okay, we have a, we have a motion to make an amendment, and Ms. Twyman accepted that. We want to retract everything and vote on the original.
So that's the second amendment, right?
I would just say, vote on this currently, we can vote it down, come back on the twentieth with the, with the, the, the revised proposal.
Yeah, and that's what originally we were planning to do, however, we proceeded already to make the amendment.
They leave the amendment there, we can still vote on it, but without, without taking into account the vacant positions, I would say we should vote, we should, I, I'm, I would personally vote it down and come back on the twentieth myself, so.
Okay, it's going to make it more confusing.
So what do we have to be, how do we have to be clear to come back on the twentieth with revised changes?
I think they understand what we want with that.
But I want them to know as well that what our intent is, because if we're getting confused, what makes you think they're not interested?
Yeah. But I, I understand that. I just, I, after having spoken with them in closed session as well, I believe they understand what our intentions are, but I do want to make sure that the vacant positions are taken into account as well, and that's the biggest thing. We cannot have the, the vacant positions still sitting there and, and be filled later because then I'll still put us, you know, farther negative. We have, the attrition has to take place, and the vacant positions have to be taken out. So I would, I would suggest coming back on the twentieth with revised proposal, including, which includes all those vacant positions being taken care of.
Okay. The, and we agree with that. The only thing is that we already make a motion to make the amendment, so we just want to delete the amendment. Withdraw, can we? Okay. Ms. Twyman, do you accept to withdraw the amendment? Okay, so that proposed amendment is withdrawn now, and we have the original recommendation. Okay. We just need to wait for a few minutes, the amended motion to be removed. Confusing. Eh, well, no, it's because I'm seeing the amen, the, the motion, the amendment, the amendment's still there. Can we refresh it? There, there is no worry now. There's nothing there, because I refresh it and there is no wor, there are no worries. It just says amended motion number one. Okay. Okay. So do I have a motion to approve action item eleven point one as originally stated at the beginning of this meeting without the amendment? Trustee Garcia, trustee Nelson, please vote.
Can we comment before we vote? Are we done with any comment?
Oh, we, we still have comments, we haven't voted. We haven't voted.
Just a word to the affected employees, thank you for speaking up. It made all the difference in the world that you came in. And you stood up for yourselves. You know, we, we don't see everything here, we need to hear from you, all your ideas and, and different perspectives on what's going on in your department, so do not hesitate to speak up, talk to your union. talk to your union presidents, let us know what you, what's going on with you, and, and so we know what direction and how to proceed, so thank you very much for being, okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, one more thing.
Yes.
Candace, there was a change, possible change in hours that you stated, right? Okay, so everybody understands that, right? Because there was a, there was.
And the start and end times for clarification, yes.
So if somebody eh, is working from seven to ten P M., three hours, it might start at eight to eleven, and if he was at Paloma, he might be at Paris.
Well, remember, we had one person with two jobs that was, that was affected.
That is going to be. Okay, we. Okay, we are going to eh, continue, because eh, based on the elements of the process of our meetings, eh, public input already, already passed, I don't want to deviate, eh, I, I'm asking for your understanding. I know that this is very important for you, but please eh, understand, we don't want to deviate, and we don't want anything coming and say, oh, it was not followed, the process was not followed, therefore what you voted also is not eh, appropriate or something like that. We don't want to, yeah, we don't want to take any, any, any risks. I just want to add to what Tony said, besides that you already did, I want to encourage all of our employees to please share with, with, with us and with the cabinet, with the superintendent, any concerns, any situations, because I think communication is the key, right? And that is our commitment to do what is eh, what is right, and in order for us to make the decision, we need to see eh, the, the other side of the, of the story, it's really, really important. So thank you for sharing that with us and to help us do our job as a, as a, as a board of education. Thank you, so now we are going to proceed eh, to vote, how I said eh, the beginning, I cannot eh, support that original proposal, so that is my vote of no. This is the original proposal, I'm voting, I cannot vote yes, that's why I voted no. I'm not. Okay, action item eleven point one, personnel resolution thirty-eight seventeen eighteen, notice of reduction of workday layoff of classified unit members for the eighteen nineteen school year has not been approved and is rejected for eh, no and one abstention. Or next, I'm sorry. Now, please, Mr. Garcia. Please, sir, exercise your.
My apologies, I should have spoke a little bit sooner, um, I would ask that we be a little bit considerate with the hours for our people, so you same members, for our employees, please, that's all I'm asking from the district at this point.
Mr. Garcia, eh, we are going to continue with the next item, information item twelve point one, board policies, security update, series zero 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 zero, series one thousand, series three thousand, and series four thousand. Next item is an action item, eh, thirteen point one, close session if necessary. Okay, how? Okay, okay. Before taking action on item thirteen point one, that is going to close session if necessary, we are going to recess the regular board meeting of the Paris Union High School District at eight twenty P M. So we are taking a recess at eight twenty, and we are going to go to C M I, and then we are going to come back. Yeah, we are in recess at eight twenty. So when we go to recess eh, in the meeting, okay, perfect. It's for special board meeting? But it doesn't say here, Mr. Bennett, for C M I? It just says special board meeting? It's at five o'clock? You're welcome, Mr. Padilla. Okay, I did, at this time, we are going to begin our California Military Institute Board Meeting. Your attention, please. At this time, we are going to start our California Military Institute Board Meeting. Okay, I'm calling the California Military Institute Special Board Meeting to order at eight twenty-two P M. Is everybody joined to meet? Yeah, okay, eh, we are going to go to the next item, information item three point one, invitation to address the Board of Trustees on agendized and non-agendized items. We don't have any takers today. Eh, action item four point one is a public hearing, curriculum, public hearing for the California Military Institute's local control accountability plan and the annual update for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. Do I have a motion? Trustee Ellison, trustee Twyman, and before we vote, we are going to have a presentation, right?
Evening, Dr. Rao, board, Mr. Bennett and cabinet. We've looked at a lot of numbers tonight, so I'm going to go through this as quickly as I can. This is our, what we attempted to accomplish this year with our L cap. Like other schools and other programs, we had meetings, student surveys, data gathering, L cap committee meetings with parents, had a lot of great input. These are the state priorities you've seen before. This year, one of our biggest goals was to grow our Avid program, we were successful with that, growing six sections to eight sections, and, uh, different intervention and supplemental software that our teachers can use with our students, and we sent a majority of our teachers to get trained in different professional development conferences, Avid, CABE. We do have a, a high-risk, high-need population with our English language learners, and we felt like that was a great investment. We did add three sections of an E L A coach to, again, help our teachers build a, a better platform that can help our English language learners. In our goal two, we had a lofty goal to, to design, uh, more of a parent program, and what that means is involving more of our parents in our kickoff to college program. We were very successful, we had four different nights where we educated our parents in, in college and career readiness, we educated them in FAFSA nights, it was, it was successful. We plan on doing the same thing this year. Goal three, we had a lot of facility upgrades we wanted to go towards, as well as bringing in web, which is a program that stands for Where Everyone Belongs, it's a middle school mentoring program, implemented that, and it's working very well. We also have link, and we expanded link for a mentoring program for our high school students. In goal four, we had a, a goal to grow our PELI program, to grow our, our English language learner involvement program, and to build a parent resource center, which we did, and it is often at capacity. We have amazing parents at C M I, I would love for any of you to come by and hang out with them. They're incredibly friendly, they have a passion to serve and be a part of the school, and we're very, very grateful for that. Our goals for this upcoming year is to invest more in our N G S S, our math and writing. Again, we have a very large need in our English language learner population, and we want to try to grow our Avid program as well. Under goal two, we want to put more effort into our college and career planning. Being a military institute, a lot of our students get accepted to college, and a, a variable number actually go in the military, we want to promote FAFSA and our A P growth. In goal three, we want to increase our school climate and connectedness to the students in our, at our school by growing our web program, our link program, and our P B I S program. We did experience some enrollment decrease and some incentive, or attendance decrease, so we're going to put more resources into attendance incentives. Goal four, we want to get better, even though we have a lot of parents involved in a great parent resource center, we want to strengthen those relationships and have a much stronger two-way communication with our parents and our stakeholders. Thank you, any questions? Thank you, appreciate that, sir. Have a good night.
Okay, please vote. Sorry, open it up, right, yes. Yeah, yeah. Okay, before we finish our, uh, voting process, eh, I'm opening this Board of Trustees' regular board meeting to a public hearing meeting to receive comments regarding the California Military Institute's L cap for the eighteen nineteen school district at eight twenty-eight P M. So if we have any comments regarding this, uh, local control accountability plan? This is, uh, the time. Okay, eh, I'm closing the public hearing to receive comments regarding the L cap of the California Military Institute eh, for the eighteen nineteen school year at eight twenty-nine P M. Now, if we can vote, please. And the item, action item four point one has been approved, five zero. Next item, action item four point two, business, public hearing regarding adoption of the eighteen nineteen California Military Institute budget. Do I have a motion, Mr. Trustee Ellison, trustee Garcia?
Good evening, everyone, seems like deja vu, try to go fast. Um, so tonight, I'm going to present the, um, proposed budget for C M I, so we'll start again with the calculation factors for L C F F. Um, as you notice, it looks very familiar to the district, except for when we get down to the supplemental concentration for two thousand eighteen nineteen, that's where you see the changes. Um, and that is because, as I explained earlier, those calculations are based on the unduplicated count, and C M I's unduplicated count is higher than the district's, so it's on the natural that they would receive more supplemental concentration monies. So some of the assumptions that we made, um, so in the last couple of years, C M I's enrollment has, um, started to decline, so, um, to be conservative, we are continuing that decline trend along with, um, the A D A that follows. Uh, if by some chance they are able to increase their enrollment back up to their cap, then we would adjust their budgets accordingly. Um, the COLA and the SERs and PERS, um, rates are the same as what they are for the district, so no change there, they're the same. Um, for CALSERs and CALSPERS, their, um, increase is specific to their charter. Um, over the seven-year period for CALSERs is four hundred and forty-four thousand, for CALSPERS is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, and those are also included in the multi-year projections. For the statutory budget increases, also included, um, step and column for the teaching staff is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Um, that also includes, of course, the health and welfare increase and, and the CALSERs, um, increase. For the classified staff is forty, almost forty-one thousand, and for management, almost sixteen thousand, with a, a total increase of a hundred and ninety-four point nine thousand. So budget expenditures, I did the same kind of breakout, um, with a table and a pie chart, so the unrestricted, um, uh, salaries and, um, benefits in one column and then restricted in the other. C M I does not receive nearly as much restricted dollars as the general, as the district does, so that's why those numbers are much different, and again, pointing out the restricted expenditures for benefits is due to the serves-on-behave recognition. For the, um, multi-year projection, um, for the estimated actuals, their total revenues are estimated to be eleven point one million dollars, their total expenditures, eleven point, almost two million dollars. So their deficit spending, and if you notice, every year, there's still deficit spending, um, increases. Um, and so we have been working with them, because this is problematic, um, so we worked with them this last semester to start reducing some of their costs, uh, through attrition, and so you can see some of their expenses have gone down, otherwise the deficit would be, um, much higher. But they do still have an, a positive ending fund balance, um, going into twenty twenty-one of about thirteen, uh, thirteen percent, but some of that is attributed to restricted dollars and economic uncertainty as well for them. And we will continue working with them to, um, contain their cost as well, and so that they don't continue to deficit spend and eat into their ending fund balance. And then the next steps are the same as what they were for the district, um, to open up a public hearing to receive input, final budget will be presented on June twentieth, and to adopt the, um, budget along with the L cap plan, and if the state budget is different, then we will, um, present to you that, um, budget for approval. Is there any questions for C M I's budget?
I know, um, my question might not be an ordinary question, but what are we doing to recruit to build up our, you know, the revenue?
Maybe I can help a little bit with that. So, um, the C M I is, um, looking to recruit additional, um, students, they've placed, um, um, I want to call them billboards, because they're not the size you think of as a billboard, but if you drive around town, you'll see, um, signage, um, up, uh, relating to C M I, um, and it's my understanding that, um, they have a waitlist in some, um, grade levels, the, the charter that, um, the board approved on the C M I, so on this, this board, the C M I board that you are acting as right now approved, uh, last month, and then you approved on the district side, um, changes, so that they don't have to have a cap in each grade level, it can be as a whole, um, for the district, and so we put those strategies in place, um, to, and they're not very far, but when it's a small budget and a small enrollment, you know, one or two students make a difference, so them being at a thousand seventeen this year, their cap is a thousand fifty, so, you know, on the district side, if we were short that few students, it wouldn't be that, um, large of a, of a deal, but for C M I it is. Yeah, 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 so.
That was going to be my question, if we are not taking away from the, eh, Paris Union High School District. Are we advertising also in other cities?
Um, I don't, are you advertising in other cities, Michael, Mr. Reds? No, sir.
Okay, all right, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ellison. Okay, so at this time, at eight thirty-five, I'm, uh, opening the, this, uh, meeting for public input at thirty-five P M. Okay, so at this time, at eight thirty-five, I'm opening this meeting for public input, eight thirty-five P M. I'm closing the public hearing to consider the eighteen nineteen California Military Institute budget at eight thirty-six P M. Oh, we need to go to the five point one, right? Five point two, five point two. Yeah. Can you tell me who made the first motion? Ms. Twyman? Ms. Twyman? Oh, David, David and Mr. Garcia? Mr. Garcia, okay. Okay, please vote. Action item four point two has been approved, five zero. The next item, action item five point one, to adjourn this special board meeting of the California Military Institute. Trustee Ellison, trustee Stafford, please vote. Action item five point one has been approved, five zero. Action item five point one has been approved, five zero, and this meeting adjourns at eight thirty-seven P M. So, we go to end of the meeting. So, we join the meeting. Start roll calling. It's a three thirty, right? Start this meeting. Join the meeting. Hello, sir? Okay, we are going to reconvene to the regular board meeting in the next ten seconds. Yeah, we're just, okay. Okay, the regular board meeting of the Perez Union High School District reconvenes at eight thirty-eight P M. The next item is action item fourteen point one, to go to close session if necessary. Trustee Ellison, trustee Garcia, and please vote to go into close session. Action item fourteen point one has been approved, five zero, and this board trustees goes to close session at eight thirty-nine P M. Okay, this Board of Trustees reconvenes in public session at nine fifty-four P M. And our next item is an action item sixteen point one, to adjourn the special board meeting of the Board of Trustees for today, June fourth. Do I have a motion? Trustee Ellison, trustee Twyman, please vote. Action item sixteen point one has been approved, five zero, and this meeting is adjourned at nine fifty-five P M.